Okay, there we go. Good morning, welcome to the July 25th meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We will call this meeting to order and begin with a moment of silence.
So I have a moment of silence for Jasmine Rae Dove Myers. She passed in June, on June 21st. She's survived by her mother and father, siblings, relatives, and friends. The service was already held, but I wanted to make sure that I did a moment of silence for Jasmine. She went to Upper Lake, graduated from Upper Lake, gone too fast.
California, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
[Inaudible]
Do we have any extra items not appearing on the agenda?
We have none.
Okay, we'll move on to consent. Do we have any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull? Supervisor Spatier?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 5.2 for clarification, please.
Any items from the public? Not seeing anyone in the chambers, and I will look. And not seeing anyone in.
Madam Chair, if you mind, I just saw a hand raised. This is to pull items from the consent agenda if you're here for public comment.
Yeah, so we're not there yet. Okay.
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I move to approve the consent agenda as offered, with the exception of 5.2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent is approved. Our 9:06 AM item, 6.1, public input. If you've got input that you would like to give, you may come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes, please state your name for the record.
Hello, thank you for having me here today. I'm just, I came here about three and a half months ago talking about building positive communities with students through project-based learning. So I'm having a meet and greet this Thursday, the 27th, from 9:00 to 9:45 at Holberg Point, Vista Point. And it just, basically, one paragraph. "This meeting will present an educational paradigm focusing on the power of young people to direct community development in a positive direction. This form of education will equip students with life skills inherited from brilliant minds, both locally and internationally, dedicated to passing on their legacy of challenge-solving knowledge. The focus of this group of students will be to promote and protect the California ecological systems and the small farmer. In addition to this, there will be a social component of working with politicians and civic leaders to come up with solutions to homelessness. It would be an honor to have you attend, to give input, help to support, and ask questions about how this group of students can help make California a brighter and happier place to live through thriving communities." So I'll just leave a few of these invitations right here. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Did she say her name?
Elaine Brown, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Yolanda Chavez, thank you for having me. I just really needed some clarity around, you know, reporting hazards and things like that. So, how do the Lake County Supervisors work with AT&amp;T and PG&E around fire prevention? On Highway 20 between Sulfur Bank Road to Highway 20Y at Highway 53 on the right side are many AT&amp;T wires entangled, embedded in the trees. The poles in these areas are owned by PG&E and the wires are AT&amp;T. When calling AT&amp;T, we are unable to reach risk management. The numbers given were not connecting to risk management. The emails given also didn't allow anyone to report a fire hazard. So if I can't get through, neither can any of the regular citizens in Lake County, and that's for AT&amp;T. How does the Board work with AT&amp;T and PG&E around fire hazards and the prevention of fires? If we cannot report hazards that need to be reviewed by someone for fire danger, then that could be a real issue. PG&E has only done a couple of miles of underground electronic construction in about five years. Do we work with PG&E to help with them prioritize where to begin the underground electric construction? Does the public have the right to input what the priorities are in our community? Is this facilitated through this Board? We are in a global warming, how do we push for getting this work done in our community? Does the Board regularly review areas around Lake County for fire hazards or work with our fire department to do this? Do you also review reports on fire hazards that are reported? And are they given to you to review? Who ensures completion in Lake County? We pay the property taxes and any other taxes given to us in Lake County. We'd like answers and to know the processes, because, you know, we really don't, and maybe we just need to understand them. So I'm leaving this with my phone number and email address, so you can contact me and maybe update me on where to go. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I, during public input, it's not a time for us to have a conversation, because it's not on the agenda, but I encourage you to reach out to your.
She's in my district.
Okay, there's an incredible amount of work that's happening in response to a lot of your questions. I'm going to pass this down to your supervisor, and you can have a conversation with him, and he can put you in the right direction.
And I've gotten a lot of recalls, and I forwarded them, I just never, we've been playing a lot of phone tag.
Okay, great. All right, next.
Michael Wagner, thanks for hearing me today. So I just wanted to bring forward something I think is pertinent and something that has been roughly touched on. When we talk about economic development, economic sustainability, in my mind, that really comes down to small local business, and especially the small farmer. When I went to fill out an agriculturally exempt permit application for myself, because I want to start a small farm, and I got three acres that are rural residential, so it's zoned properly, the application itself, the first item on it, says the property has to be 10 acres or more. So, that stipulation, that requirement to have 10 acres or more, really allows for the big farms or land barons to be able to have a lower cost than the small farms. To subjugate out anybody who does fall within the zoning as required seems unfair and maybe not even in coinciding with all the conversations that we've had about farms and small farms. So, I would hope and ask that you guys take a look at the requirements for agriculturally exempted buildings, and consider changing the 10-acre requirement, and look more at just the zoning itself for the requirements for those type of buildings, so we don't put undue stress on small farms. When we have one big farmer or one big farming operation, if they go under or stop, you know, operations, period, then if, you know, the infrastructure starts to fall apart. But when we have an area that is being supportive of small local farms, if one company goes down, or one farm goes down, we still have the wealth of the other small farms that are all now working together. So I think to support economic sustainability and infrastructure itself, we should really support the small farmers who are trying to participate. Thank you.
And I just have a question, have you reached out to the Farm Bureau, or are?
I have, I have tried to contact the Farm Bureau a number of times with how the area works. If you're a big farm, you get noticed. If you're a small farmer, they'll, you know, they'll get to you when they can.
And the Agricultural Commissioner?
I've already spoke with Catherine, and she has no, she, her, her job is to help the agricultural community, but at the same time to stay in following with the rules of the county. So she can't go against the county's ordinance or rules that require the 10 acres.
Okay, and you're in District 4, and you can.
You know what, Jessica, I'm sorry, I moved, and I'm now in District 5 with.
Five, or four?
No, 4. I'm with Mr. Green.
Okay.
You guys changed the lines a little bit, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so you can check the map on our GIS, find out exactly where you are, and reach out to either of us, and maybe start, we can start with that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else with public input? I'm not seeing any hands in the Zoom room. We'll close this item, and we will, yeah, we're past, we're, we do not have a Pet of the Week unfortunately this week, so we will go on to 6.3, 9:08 AM, Presentation of Proclamation Commending Lynn Prescott for his 25 years of service to the County of Lake, and Supervisor Spatier is presenting.
Special Districts, do you want to be up here?
Come on up, all the way up.
All the way up.
All the way up.
Don't be shy, all the way up. All the way up. All right. So, a lot of times we talk about how we struggle to hire people, find people to take positions, and then we have the complete opposite, where at times we have, we get to celebrate a massive amount of years dedicated to serving the people of Lake County, and this is one of those moments. So thank you for your service for 23 years. Today, the Board of Supervisors, there's a proclamation commending Lynn Prescott for his 23 years of service to the County of Lake. Whereas Lynn Prescott applied for a position with the County of Lake as Utility Worker 1 in November of 2000, and was hired in that capacity in March of 2001. And whereas he quickly and consistently demonstrated a strong work ethic, exceptional knowledge, and leadership qualities, always receiving above-average and outstanding performance reviews, and proving himself an ideal candidate for promotional opportunities within the department throughout his career. And whereas Lynn Prescott promoted to Utility Worker 2 on April of 2002. And whereas Lynn Prescott promoted to Utility Worker 3, taking on the responsibilities of a foreman, in November of 2002. Whereas, while serving as Utility Worker 3, Lynn Prescott took initiative and successfully acquired his Collection System Operator Certificate in 2009, above and beyond any department or state requirements. And whereas Lynn Prescott was promoted to Utility Area Superintendent in February 2013, and has brought outstanding skill, creative insight, and solutions, as well as a strong commitment to public service in this role for the last decade. And whereas, over the span of his career with Lake County, Lynn also served as a Staff Sergeant in the Army, and was deployed to seek combat on three occasions, courageously serving his country. And whereas Lynn Prescott has been a productive and inspiring leader to countless coworkers and staff over his remarkable period of service with the County of Lake, and he has diligently trained and imparted knowledge to others within his organization in order to continue the high standard he has worked hard to cultivate. And whereas, staff, colleagues, and the broader public will greater miss Lynn Prescott and his tremendous contributions within the Water and Sewer Districts he has served. And whereas Lynn Prescott has announced his intention to retire on July 31st, 2023. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake hereby recognizes and commends Lynn Prescott for his 23 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the County of Lake and the Special Districts Department, and we wish him good health and much happiness during his retirement. Adopted this day, the 25th day of July, 2023. [Applause] You're not done yet. Would you like to say any words?
Oh, no, I'm dead.
I'll ask Scott if you have any words. We're not done talking about you.
Yeah, we're going to embarrass you for just a little bit longer. I'm Scott Harder, Special Districts Administrator. I hired on with Special Districts about nine years ago. I've been Lynn's supervisor for that entire time. I started out as the Deputy Administrator, and he was a direct report to me. Everything in that proclamation is true. He's, he's been an incredible asset, he's a wonderful employee, hardworking, diligent. He always sees things from a different perspective. He's got this real creative way to come up with solutions that no one else would see. Tremendous asset to us. He's no-nonsense, and you can probably tell that, he's wanting to get back to work, he's not wanting to be up here. And, you know, that, that just speaks to his character. He's been a great mentor for the new employees that we hire, doesn't put up with any BS, gets the work done. We are sad to see him go, but we are happy that he's headed into retirement and looking forward to those years ahead of him, so.
Public comments on this item? I see he has friends and colleagues, just wondering, this is the moment to embarrass?
Hi, I'm Jan Coppinger. I was the former Special Districts Administrator, and I worked with Lynn for about 12 years, except for the time he was deployed. And that proclamation says everything about why I loved him as an employee. I want to talk about his character. One of the things I loved the most about him is he was always humble, so polite, he reminded me of a southern gentleman, but he took no crap, and when things needed to get done, that man got them done. He was a power to be reckoned with, and I just always admired that. And Lynn, I love being your boss, so.
Thank you, Jan. Well, we thank you for all your years of service. It's been a pleasure getting to know you through this proclamation. We haven't met personally, but thank you so much, and enjoy your retirement.
I'll say one last thing, because I have to highlight this. Being a good worker is one thing, but having the motivations to go above and beyond is another. Doing the tasks that you're told that this is what needs to happen during the day, continuing your education when it's not absolutely necessary for the job, speaks to your personal motivations as a person who wants to grow and develop themselves. Serving your country during that time period as well shows you want to grow, you want to do something more for your community. I hope that you have rubbed off on many others. You're an inspiration, that's what we want to see in our community, and thank you for being a part of the County of Lake, truly appreciate it. [Applause] Do you want to open up your proclamation? Thank you. Oh, great, let's just get a little more just in case. True, thank you.
Okay, our next item is 6.4, 7:20, 9:20 AM, still on Texas time, apparently. Consideration of a Request for Assistance Under the California Disaster Assistance Act, CDAA, to Mitigate Pervasive Tree Mortality, Including a Memo Hazard Tree Removal Plan, HTRP, and Letter Requesting Waiver of 25% Local Match Requirement. And this is brought to us by our Administrative Office. We've got Matthew Rothstein and Terry Logston.
Good morning, Board. My name is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer, and it's my pleasure to present this item this morning. And as you'll see here, Terry Logston, our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer, is likewise here, and will be able to respond to any questions that you have once the presentation has concluded. As you're aware, repeated and compounding wildfire events, extreme drought conditions, and groundwater depletion have led to widespread tree mortality in the state of California, and in Lake County specifically. In 2019, the United States Forest Service estimated 1,000 Lake County acres were afflicted by tree mortality, and the estimated number of dead trees was 3,000. By 2022, however, those estimates had reached 31,000 acres and 590,000 dead trees. To be clear, this is in Lake County alone. 22,000 of those trees sit along county roadways and rights-of-way, many miles of which are critical arteries and evacuation routes for our communities. In a response to that, on May 3, 2022, your Board adopted Resolution 2022-61, which was a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality. As your Board is aware, unprecedented storms of 2023 temporarily lessened drought conditions, but they also demonstrated the vulnerability of county rights-of-way to obstruction from downed trees. Removal of the 20, 22,000 or more, that's a growing number of hazard trees that threaten public infrastructure and public safety, is clearly an urgent priority and well beyond the capacity of the county to fund through local resources. Understanding what state and federal supports can be available, therefore, is critical to our ability to respond. In the time since your Board's proclamation, Supervisor Pyska and staff have coordinated with CAL OES, the Governor's Office of External Affairs, MGE, and other local, state, and federal partners, to evaluate the magnitude of the situation and potential for funding. California Disaster Assistance Act, CDAA-enabled funding, as you are aware, is provided on a 75% to 25% reimbursement basis. So if we submit costs, we can expect, under normal conditions, that 75% of those costs would be reimbursed, to be clear. And the county is responsible for securing funding for all of those costs upfront, and then waiting for reimbursement for a period of time. With your Board's approval and support, staff requested USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forest Forestry Inflation Reduction Act funding on June 1, 2023, which could potentially cover a portion at least of the local match requirement. Unfortunately, to date, no funding decision has been communicated on that by USDA. To substantially mitigate tree mortality, significant funding will be needed. With many other routes having been explored, I want to draw particular attention today to Lake County's letter requesting waiver of the 25% local, local match requirement. That will be submitted to Director Ward and his discretionary among the executive staff at CAL OES, and with, you know, gubernatorial support potentially. That's really pretty critical to our being able to respond in a meaningful way to tree mortality in Lake County, and we'll continue to seek the governor's support for that letter. And as you will have seen, all required supportive documentation for the application was attached to this agenda item today, there were quite a number of documents. And on review and consultation with County Office of Emergency Services, Public Works, and Disaster Finance Partners, staff finds that the following Board actions will support submittal of the request that we're placing today. Those include approve, submittal of all required and supportive documentation to CAL OES's Public Assistance Division pursuant to the California Disaster Assistance Act, collectively constituting Lake County's formal request for assistance to mitigate pervasive tree mortality. Authorize our CAO, Susan Parker, as authorized agent for Lake County in this request for assistance, providing required county assurances. Authorize Auditor Controller Genevieve Harrington as a secondary authorized agent, as consistent with Forms CAL OES 130 and OES FPD 012. Authorize the following as additional approved contacts: Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director, Stephen L. Carter Jr., Assistant County Administrative Officer, and Terry Logston, our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer. And as previously mentioned, approve the letter to Director Ward of CAL OES, requesting waiver of the 25% local match requirement, and authorize Chair Pyska to sign that letter on your Board's behalf. To be clear, with today's item, we're submitting a request for assistance to the state. There are no contracts associated with this, we're not agreeing to any particular pricing for the tree removal services, for example. What we have done is defined the most urgent priority, which is removal of the dead and dying trees from county roadways and evacuation routes, and we're providing the necessary documentation to seek the state's, state's support pursuant to the Disaster Assistance Act. Documents have been prepared for this application in consistency with past successful applications from other counties. And I want to acknowledge that a lot of work has gone into this to get us to this point, quite a lot of work. And we really could not have gotten this far without the tremendous leadership of Chair Pyska, who has really become a regional leader and statewide leader in this effort, and also our CAO, Susan Parker. And the collaboration and thought partnership of many others, including our Public Works Director, Scott DeLeon, Emergency Services Manager, Leah Sodale, our contractors with MGE, and partners with Lake County Resource Conservation District, including Kevin Soland, our forester, and our Auditor Controller, Genevieve Harrington, and her Disaster Finance Fiscal Manager, Dakota Hocken. All of those people have been absolutely essential, and I apologize if I'm forgetting anyone. I will look to Terry and Supervisor Pyska to fill in any blanks. And I also want to especially thank Terry Logston, our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer. You'll know she's been here since about, since December, since early December, and her dedication since arriving here to ensuring all the pieces of this complicated puzzle came into form in the best available manner has been, you know, truly remarkable and worthy of your Board's understanding and recognition. So we look forward, that concludes this presentation, and we look forward to any questions your Board has, and look forward to submitting this application to the state.
Did you have anything else to add, Terry? No. Well, I also want to thank Senator McGuire's office, who's been kind of with us along the way, attending so many meetings, and just there for general backup, and hopefully will help us continue to carry this forward. So do we have questions for the Board? Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, just a few things. Appreciate all this information. I feel like our ask gets overpowered by what's too obvious in a letter, because what stands out to me are the bullets, and the bullets to speak to way more than what we're asking for. It speaks about 31,000 acres, we want to make a point that there's a problem, right? So that's why those bullet points are there. But then underneath, it says there are at least 22,000 dead trees along, I feel like we need to highlight that, like bold it, because we don't want it to get lost, that we're not asking to take care of 590,000 trees, or else, that's like asking $2 billion from the state and say, please waive the 25%, right? Like, I want to make sure that it's easy for the state to find the specifics, where obviously that would potentially be $88 million, and then 25% is being asked to be waived. So I think something of that effect needs to happen to make sure that we're highlighting the specifics, not highlighting the worst-case scenario of getting everything taken care of. And there's a couple of other things. You mentioned the USDA. I would say because of the week that Chair Pyska and I just had in Austin at the NACO Conference, we met with the, I have his card right here, Director of State Operations, so he oversees all the state directors for USDA Rural Development Programs. We were with him, I would say, at least two of the five days, and he was also at our lunch table that we had on a special seating that we were provided. And so I would say, reach out again and see if that personal contact helps out. He talked about, there's 70 programs, as long as what you're asking us is legal, we'll figure out a way to make it work, and I believe I can quote him on that. And I would say, let's use that, that personal contact that we made to see if we can get a different response from USDA. Then I have another question. So this is big money, right? $88 million, 25%, so we're looking at like $22 million or something like that. I believe we've put some money aside, either in ARPA or in cannabis taxes, I'm just wondering if we tell them, hey, we have $500,000 right now to match, we're not asking for you to give us a blank, clean slate of zero, we're putting in zero, you're going to give us the full 25% waiver. What does that look like within our letter if we say, hey, we have some money right now, this is what we can afford to provide, we're not asking to just give us everything, we're trying to pitch in where we can? Does that really make for a different reaction when this is received at CAL OES versus, we've got nothing, we're asking for everything? So those are, those are my questions.
So a couple of things to respond to. We can only do this for the 22,000, so, I mean, we can bold it, and at the end of the day, it has to be within our, around our infrastructure. So I think that is just generally known in our letter. As far as the Inflation Reduction Act funding, that still has a 50% match, so yes, we want to get that, but yes, we still need this waiver to even cut down on that 50% match. And then, what was your third point?
About putting some money up front and saying that we, we've allocated.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's really necessary. To be clear, this waiver request, we don't know anything about this process. When the person managing the program came up here in May of 2022 to explain how the program runs, and he had been running the program for 10 years, there was no mention of a waiver. He retired, and then we had a call with his manager, who has been overseeing the program since its inception. He casually mentioned a waiver could be possible. We've done the research, we've never We've done the research, we've never found it. McGuire's, Senator McGuire's office never heard of it. It was never mentioned. So we're kind of in new territory with this waiver request. The match was legislated previously in 2015. We can't get it legislated again, so this is, this is a way to just see what will happen. I kind of hesitate to see how much we have to get started because how this program operates is you just draw a circle, like we have this polygon here, we're going to start working there. And we don't, we just submit as we go. And, you know, there's a certain amount of standing dead trees in that polygon now. We know it's going to grow, but that's the flexibility in the program, is that you just get started, you start in one area, you work around, by the time you get to the other side, there's probably more trees and you got to start again. So it is an unknown amount, and there's an understanding with this application that it is an unknown amount. So that's my response, but I don't know if either of you have anything else to add.
I do have just one addition, and that's that while we haven't seen a waiver request being approved, that was a step that some other counties took in 2016, which was a precursor to the state saying in 2018, we need a CAL FIRE program to come alongside counties that are struggling. So having that documentation in place could be an essential step to making sure that the issue is known and documented. And then if there is some future possibility of state funding to come alongside that isn't necessarily the full waiver, or if there, you know, also, you know, this will be submitted to staff with the agency that have discretion to make a thoughtful response. So we're not necessarily anticipating that we'll get, you know, quote a blank check or something like that, but we are expecting that this is a step in the process that will help us get the maximal possible state support.
Yeah. Oh, and one more thing to add. My conversations with Supervisor Smallcomb from Mariposa County, we've been working very closely on this for close to two years. And she mentioned, because I said we were about to do this and submit, and she said, you know, it's really interesting. We just got, we heard back from CAL OES about the cleanup from the Oak Fire, and they only have a 10% match. And she couldn't figure out why, she was showing me the emails, and I thought, well, that's probably a waiver that no one's really talking about or knows about, that they kind of just got it without even requesting. So if we can at least get this down to 10%, maybe even 15%, but any reduction in that 25% is going to be helpful to us. And then if and when we do hear about the Inflation Reduction Act funding, we, our match for that gets smaller, too.
And just to finish off, I know you've put a lot more work into this than I have, so your knowledge is going to be greater, so I'm okay with moving forward. I just know with the Middle Creek Restoration Project, since we allocated $800,000 to the design process, that was a question that we received from the Army Corps engineer, and once they knew and saw the proof that we had that money allocated, now we're meeting weekly with the Army Corps to help move the project along. So sometimes it could help and grease up the wheels a little bit more. So just wanted to bring that up, but happy to move forward.
Yeah, I think it's a completely different scenario. Any other questions? Supervisor Green.
Thanks. Appreciate the hard work that went into this. I just want to turn to the one pager briefly, just for clarity. There's a map on there. I think that's the polygon you were just referencing, so I'm guessing that's a proposed work area, but I don't see a caption or something that explains that. There's also a reference to the map on the reverse, and on a one pager, it's going to be hard to show a map on the reverse unless it's actually a two pager. So that was one question, just what is that polygon shape on the one pager? Can that be clarified if that's a proposed work area or an area of focus for the funding request? And so that's just a real simple question. The other real simple comment is just, I'm a recovering editor, so every time I see the word exponentially, I want to say, no, it's geometrically. So I appreciate that tree mortality is spreading very rapidly, but I highly doubt it's an exponential rate of spread. So, so the question on the polygon.
Yeah, so on the polygon, that's clarified really in the Hazard Tree Removal Plan, that that's the area of focus. It is on the one pager, and my apologies if the copy of the one pager that was attached did not include the map on the reverse. We do have a version that includes the map on the reverse. We can make sure that that's the version that's attached with the application. But yes, the Hazard Tree Removal Plan clarifies that the polygon area, which is here on page 12 of the Hazard Tree Removal Plan, is the area of focus.
Okay. Then maybe just adding a caption or a one-line little thing under that map would clarify it for its repurposing on the one pager.
Great. Yeah, thank you for that feedback.
It looks like a good package, very supportive of this. Let's see what happens.
Any comments from the public? Just a moment. You could come up to the podium after this.
Michael Wagner. First, I'd like to commend Chair Pyska for taking this on. What a huge endeavor and super-duper important for everybody. I'm sure anybody who's traveled around Lake County has seen this as an issue and definitely concerning and slightly scary, right?
Very scary.
Something I wanted to bring up, and I don't know if this is the proper way to go about it, but as we remove these dead trees, the potential to replant those trees at the same time would seem like maybe we can combine the two together and perhaps find some funding for the replanting of the trees from the state so that maybe you could gain money or momentum for your project kind of indirectly. At the same time, when we talk about money development and we talk about swaths of trees, living or dead, it brings into my mind carbon credits and the ability to generate carbon credits from land and trees. So maybe you could offset some of the cost by getting the carbon credits for the living trees and land that we do have. I'm not sure who would know, but maybe somebody here does know if that land does have, you know, all the land is not dead, right? There's swaths of dead trees, but there's also a large amount of living trees that we could carbon credit now to fund your project. Just something I wanted to point out, and if anybody would like to speak to me about it, I'd be happy to assist.
Sure. So appreciate your comments. This program is only for protecting infrastructure, so it's only for the dead trees that could fall on our roads or our county buildings or our parks. So it's just really getting that right-of-way cleared. So we don't, this will not go out on the general landscape at all. And a lot of the areas are our county right-of-ways. We do have to work with some landowners to get, you know, it's probably going to be about 100 feet, maybe 200 feet from the road, so it's not going out on the landscape. So if that property owner wants to do a replanting program, you know, that would be up to them. But this, this is such a massive program, we have to stay specifically within the guidelines.
Yeah, focused on what you're doing.
Correct. We do have a lot of other things going on with large landowners that want to do forest health work. I think that's maybe where your comments would align better.
Okay. Ms. Pyska, maybe, thank you for addressing it. Maybe you and I could talk about that in the future.
Of course.
Thank you.
Hi, Yolanda Chavez. I'm really glad I came today because that's great, what you're working on. I just had a question about, you know, all the homeowners' associations around the lake, and they have people, you know, on their property, and on their properties, they have old trees that are dead, and they can't afford to cut them down. Any funding or anyone to call to see what we can do about that?
Yes. So again, that is outside of the scope of this particular program, which is just for protecting infrastructure. But we are working on those programs. We've been applying for funding for homeowner assistance, for, you know, grant work. Clerk has done a lot of this over the last couple of years in the really, in the areas where it's kind of the epicenter of beetle kill. We're working really closely with PG&E to make sure that they're on their infrastructure. We have a tree mortality task force. We meet monthly. It's an agency-to-agency meeting. We're having our meeting on this Friday. So there's a lot, this is a bigger problem than just, you know, keeping our roads clear. We've got to keep our communities safe. We've got to harden our communities. We've got to have our fire breaks around them. We can't have standing dead trees around. So there is a massive, massive problem, and this is just one piece of it. Okay, thank you. Come on up. Oh, but I'll just add one other thing. If you would like to join the Fire Safe Council, Lake County Fire Safe Council, or Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority meetings, those are two places where we talk about this a lot. That are public meetings. Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, we meet the third Monday of the month at 3 o'clock. That moves, so you've checked our county website for the agenda and location. And then the Fire Safe Council, Lake County Fire Safe Council meeting is a Zoom meeting on the second Thursday at 10:00 AM. Of course.
Yes, I'm, it's probably a smaller issue than what we're looking at, but I'm here because I'm, first of all, I'm--
Your name, please?
Paulette Allen with DNP Poles. I'm the contractor. And I'm here because right now I have a permit that's been in the building department for almost four and a half months, very simple layout. And I've been building here in Sonoma County, Sonoma County for 30 years, here for 24 years in Mendocino County. It is taking me three to four to five months to get a permit, and swimming pool permits are costing five--
I'm sorry, this is about swimming pools?
Yes.
Okay, so this discussion item is about our package that we're sending to the state for tree mortality.
So did we already miss our turn for today to represent?
Yes. Public input was at 9:06.
We didn't know that.
Yeah.
We were here, but we didn't know it was our turn. We didn't know we could stand up.
Yeah. We have to adhere to--
So when is next board meeting?
Our next board meeting will be next Tuesday, and 9:06 public input would be--
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the chambers or the Zoom room that would like to comment on this item? And I'm not seeing any in either place, so I will bring it back to the board. I don't know if Matthew or Terry have anything further to add.
If I have the corrections correctly, what on the waiver letter, I'm going to switch the sentences per Supervisor Sabate's suggestion and make the second sentence the first sentence so that it's directly under that link, and then to add the polygon to the one pager on the back.
Okay. Isn't it already on the back?
The polygon is on the one pager, but what we're needing to do is make sure that we have the broader vegetation losses map on the back, and also Supervisor Green asked for a caption on the front describing what the polygon is, or to make sure at least on the front of the one pager that it's clear what that polygon is.
Okay.
We're happy to do this.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
I just had a question, and I was going to ask it, but we got it in public input. Worst-case scenario is they charge us the 25%, and that's that. We submit, and is it kind of like one of those gimmies, or is it like we're crossing our fingers regardless?
It, it, I don't want to use the word gimme, but the program is set up--
I'm sorry.
And they, no, it's okay. The disaster is still open, and so this is the process to get the funding.
High chance.
Yeah. And if we don't get any assistance with the match, then we'll just work through the money that we've earmarked, and we'll go as far as we can go.
Okay. So it's not going to hurt to ask for a waiver because they'll just say, nope, but you have the power to charge this amount or whatever. Okay.
Right. So what we're just trying to make the case, and what I've been making the case up and down this state, is we don't, we can't afford the match, or that, the money that we have won't go very far, and we can't protect our communities without further assistance.
All right.
Okay.
Motion to approve submittal of all required and supportive documentation to CAL OES Public Assistance Division pursuant to the California Disaster Assistance Act, collectively constituting Lake County's formal request for assistance to mitigate pervasive tree mortality. With corrections and additions, or do I have to do that in a different one?
With corrections.
If I'm understanding it correctly, I believe it's, yeah, would that be on the first and fifth bullet point as far as the corrections being made?
So my understanding is that it's the, it's the waiver letter that has the content that Supervisor Sabate was referencing. So if we can just make sure that the waiver letter is as amended once we get to that action item.
Got it. Okay. So then I don't need to add additions and corrections, just solely ending at mitigated pervasive tree mortality. You want me to read it off again, again?
I do believe there were some changes to the one pager that were described by Ms. Logston.
Yes, and that's an advocacy document that we've prepared, not a board-approved document historically.
Because it says here, submittal of all supportive documentation. So just want to see if we need to make the amendment with the supportive documentation as presented.
Could be, yes. So on that first bullet point, it would be as amended if there are changes to be made with the document.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I authorize Susan Parker, CAO as authorized agent for Lake County in this request for assistance, providing required county assurances.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I authorize Auditor Controller Genevieve Harrington as secondary authorized agent as consistent with Forms CAL OES 130 and OES FPD 012.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the following as additional approved contacts: Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director, Stephen L. Carter Jr., Assistant County Administrative Officer, and Terry Logston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer. And, well, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the letter to Director Ward requesting waiver of 25% local match requirement and authorize Chair Pyska to sign with amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both so much. So been a relief. Okay, we can do 5.2. Approve agreement between the County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, DBA New Life LLC for substance use disorder outpatient drug-free services, intensive outpatient treatment services, and narcotic treatment program services for fiscal year 2022, '23 for 2021, '22 services in the amount of $95,662.58, and authorize the board chair to sign. And we have Elise Jones, our Deputy Director.
Yes, good morning, Board. Elise Jones, thank you for your consideration of this agreement. I get--
We could just ask him what he wants.
Thank you.
So to me, the item itself is pretty simple to understand via the memo. There were some extra costs that were found out later on. We're trying to rectify that and pay our bills. This is from '21, '22. That fiscal year financially has been closed. We're trying to pay it off in the '22, '23, which we're working on closing that fiscal year. But within the context of the contract, I just had a few things that kind of had some red flags. Had conversation with both Ms. Jones, Mr. Carter, and Mr. Guentavano. And if it works out, which I think it does, at least for the departments, and if it works for the board, under Section 3, under compensation, because the term up above it doesn't have any specific dates of the terms of the services, that's where I got confused. Typically, a contract says what the service will be and when those services will be provided. This is a special case. So if we can add in the compensation, the first line, contractor has been selected by county to provide the services described here under in Exhibit A titled Scope of Services, if we can add after that, in fiscal year '21, '22, then at least that tells us the compensation will be for those services within that timeframe that we are paying for. And that way, when I read this as a singular contract, I can understand what the services are and what the timeline of those services are, rather than before, it was a little vague. And that's the only thing that I'm requesting.
Easy work.
Okay. Any other comments? Anyone from the public? Not seeing anyone in Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, DBA New Life LLC for substance use-- Authority, DBA New Life LLC for substance use disorder outpatient drug-free services, intensive outpatient treatment services, and narcotic treatment program services for the fiscal year 2022-23 for 2021-22 services in the amount of $95,662.58, and authorize the board chair to sign as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
And do I need to add in with the condition of the, if you can help me with that, please?
Yes, with the approval, with the board's approval conditioned upon the contractor's execution of the agreement as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we are just before 10:00. Thank you. So we'll do our 7.2 item, "Consideration to schedule a meeting, a special meeting to interview public defender candidates in closed session." And I will turn this over to CAO Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we're going to, I'm going to ask that we schedule a special meeting for the interviews for the chief public defender. We have listed two possible dates, and I just need to hear from the board the preferred date for interviews. I hope to spread them over two days. We'll have possibly two on Tuesday, and then the remaining three on the date that you select.
We're starting at 9:00 a.m.?
Yes.
I think at both days I'd have to move a lot around, but maybe Friday? Do you think we'll be done by 2:00?
Yes.
Okay, then Friday works better for me.
Friday doesn't work for me. We have to go for a meeting with the Congressman.
Then that's, okay, there you go. Then we'll move around the ARPA meeting that we have scheduled for the 13th.
I was going to ask about the ARPA meeting, because that's after, that's 9:30, I think it is.
8:30.
I guess my line to the other side of the screen moved towards 9:30. Okay, gotcha, 8:30.
We'll reschedule it either for another day or later that day, if that is what.
Later that day will work if we're just clearing the deck.
Yeah, I'll figure it out for Thursday.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to schedule a special meeting to interview public defender candidates in closed session on August, Thursday, August 3 at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Board.
We've got our special meeting. And we can do 7.3, "Consideration of the following advisory board appointments." We have a mental health board appointment, and we have a heritage commission appointment. So we've got, for mental health, we still have three vacancies, and it looks like a reappointment of Kendra Wiegand. And any comments about Kendra for reappointment? Okay, anyone from the public? Not seeing any.
And are you good with that? She's.
Yeah, she's in my district, of course.
Okay, and Madam Chair, if you're looking for a motion, I move to approve Kendra Wiegand, or Wiegand, I apologize, to the mental health board.
I believe it's Wiegand, and I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Then heritage commission, where we still have six vacancies, and this applicant is Joan Kramer.
And spoke with Ms. Kramer to join the heritage commission, so obviously I'm in approval of her joining.
Okay, any comments from the public? No one in Zoom? All right, bringing it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Joan Kramer to the heritage commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 10:00. We will do our 10:00 a.m. item, 6.5, "Consideration of Amendment Number 2 to the Agreement Between the County of Lake and Sunrise Special Services Foundation," increasing the total compensation for the agreement to $460,800 for fiscal year 2022-23 and 2023-24, and authorize the board chair to sign. And once again, we have our Deputy Director, Elise Jones.
I apologize for forgetting that you have a boot. I should have just asked you to maybe sit back rather than walk back.
Madam Chair.
Made me feel bad.
Commonly, I would have recused myself from this subject, but there's, I don't feel I have a conflict any longer, so I will sit in on it.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Got to catch my breath from the strenuous work environment. Okay, good morning, Board. Elise Jones, Deputy Director of Administration. I'm pleased to bring a contract forward for continued sheltering services for our county. So the Lake County Continuum of Care convened a meeting last week and voted to re-fly the request for proposals that had been issued for these temporary sheltering services using homeless housing and assistance program funds, but also voted to extend the contract with Sunrise for these services so as not to have a break in services while we retool and reissue and reevaluate the RFP for those services.
Okay, questions, comments from the board? Do you have something, Supervisor Sabate?
Yes, my pen was stuck in my hand. So there are two things that I would like to see changed on here, and I'm wondering if Ms. Jones also has something else to bring us. I know it was mentioned in email about an update to the budget.
Yes, I do. Thank you so much, Supervisor. So I do have an updated budget that was provided after the item was submitted from Sunrise. And I wasn't quite sure the best way, should I read it aloud, or how? I would appreciate some direction in how to present the updated budget.
Want to share it on the screen?
Let me email it to Johanna really quick. Thank you so much.
And while, while she's doing that, if I can speak to the changes that I would like to see. So as we can see on the Section 2 for the term, it speaks to all the way to terminate on October 24, 2023. However, in Section 1.1, which is the contractor's responsibilities, it states that they would be able to use Juvenile Hall until August 23, rather than October 24. So I'd like to change that date. And on description of services, "Providing a warming center operation through August 23," again, I'd like to change that to October 24 to match the term so that it's 90 days and not 30 days. That would be the only changes that I'm requesting.
Thank you.
Okay. So here we have the budget, the updated budget.
This is, yes, this is the updated proposed budget. As you can see, it still falls within the total funding allocation per month. Per month, they have just simply adjusted line items.
Which line items did you adjust?
Every single one of them, I believe, is adjusted.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, I'm just going to go through it. Looks like originally the last budget that we had received was $1,000 for utilities. It's down to $200 per month. I struggle with that one. That's a big building. $200 a month is more of a monthly utility for a normal household, not a place with 34 beds and a commercial kitchen, so I'm kind of struggling where that comes from. I don't believe anybody's paying for utilities other than Sunrise.
What are the bills now?
I haven't personally viewed any bills. We have recently reviewed, our fiscal manager conducted an audit where they reviewed the receipts and against what the expenditures were, and did find that there was significant variance within the items, which is reflected in the proposed modifications here. So I would have to say that this is based on the contractor's evaluation of their utility costs, and I would be unable to comment further as to how they made that determination.
And so the one that stands out, and I appreciate the information, the one that stands out to me is the admin. The last budget was 10%, which to me is kind of the norm. You get a grant, you take 10% off the top. That pays for the administrative portion of administering the grant, managing the grant, reporting on the grant, and now it's up to 15%. So we see a reduction in utilities. We see a reduction in food. We see a reduction in vehicle fuel. That's concerning to me. I've already, we've heard, now whether it's, take it with a grain of salt or not, but we've heard that there has been issues as of late potentially with getting food at the shelter. Here, it's decreasing by 33% from 3,000 to 2,000. I know what my bill looks like for a household of four, $2,000 for a house of 34 rooms, potentially more than one in one room. Granted, donations are definitely occurring, and I'm thankful for those donations to the shelter. But I'm, so I already had some hesitance with this contract. Just for transparency, I voted no at the COC to continue this, that we have seen some issues with our contractor in the sense of meeting the responsibilities of the contractor within the contract. I brought some of those issues in the previous extension to the contract. I wanted to be transparent about what those issues were. And I still have those concerns, very much so about our contractor meeting their responsibilities to provide a safe and clean shelter for those that need it the most. This is a very vulnerable population. And it's one of those really difficult decisions where if I say no to this, that means people who currently have a roof over their head, which I believe last count was 18 or maybe in the 20s, rather than 34, 40, like it was during the wintertime, that that is rude. That is taking away a very lower part of Maslow's hierarchy of needs for any human being. But I also feel saying yes to this is saying Lake County is okay with being good enough, rather than setting a standard of what we should expect our contractors to meet. And I'm tired of the idea of good enough. Here, we're getting a budget that has yet to be revised by the COC. The COC approves specific things to be brought back here. So I guess the question to you would be, are we utilizing county funds or COC funds for this? I'm really not comfortable with admin taking an extra 5% and taking away from some very essential necessities for a shelter. So I guess I have that question, but I, at this moment in time, this, this new budget adds to more of my concerns of how we're dealing with our shelter. And I would, I don't want to shut down the shelter, but I can't say yes to this.
What is the reason for the increase in the admin?
That's a great question. So I think, just to jump over a few things and get to a solution, if that's okay, I'd like to propose, and that this board would approve an admin cost of 10%. And I would like to propose that that, the difference between 7,000, well, it's 15% and 10% is $1,880. So it's between 7,000 and 5,120. Okay, and so I'd like to propose that 880 is added into the utilities line for a total of 1,080 for utilities, which I agree may be more appropriate, reflecting on my own household of five. And I can also propose that the $1,000 goes into the food or other supplies costs, and we can take that back to the contractor. I think it's a small change, but I think it may be enough to make us feel more comfortable. And as you said, Supervisor, preserving life and dignity is super important. And I would also like the board to consider viewing this process of addressing our unhoused needs through an iterative lens. So yes, could it be better? And will it be better in the future? Absolutely, as we further refine our business practices and further work with our community to bolster those services. But this is what we have. So that's my proposal.
Okay, and then what about managing the contract requirements?
Yes, so we are managing the contract requirements. It does happen within the Lake County Continuum of Care meetings. It did happen during the contractor selection process with the executive committee, where contractor's performance as regards various contractual items was evaluated and as part of the determination in the RFP process. And so our department does take on the burden administratively for monitoring the contract financially, but also to ensure that they do their homeless management information system, or HMIS entries, ensure that people are connected to the coordinated entry system, so hopefully they can step out of being unhoused. So we do monitor to those items. And we are also receiving significant technical assistance from HCD, Housing and Community Development Commission, and also through the HHAP. I believe that sometimes they subcontract for TA services for various grants, and we're definitely taking every opportunity for that.
Okay. Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Couple of concerns. I suppose we can tweak the line items, but my concerns have to do with process. So this budget, as it was reviewed by, I assume, the executive committee of COC and recommended for approval, no COC general membership?
The COC has not seen this budget. That was provided to them after the fact.
The original that was on the attachment, yes, but not the new one.
Thank you.
So what, what did COC see?
What is in the contract and the, in the attachment of the agenda item, which is not this.
Yeah, see, she, remember, she said she had an updated budget? That's why we put it up on the screen, because it's not in the package.
Okay, so COC has seen something. We are now seeing an updated something today that COC didn't see. Your concerns are duly noted. When you were on the COC, sitting in that capacity, you voted no on this. Now you're sitting on this board, getting ready to take another vote on this. So this is not the day to have this discussion. But the relationship of COC and the county, and this contract extension, and the contracts issued before, where BH and the county essentially are acting as lead agency, air quotes, because that's one term, but there's many other terms that can be used in COC landia, including collaborative applicant, HMS, lead. Anyway, there's a long story of COC and how it's evolved into what it is at this point, and I can't second guess that today because it's not on the agenda. But I do have concerns with the process, where we bring something to COC for their buy-in as a quasi-independent group, or not quasi-independent, we'll see. And then we take another bite at the apple here today, in this case relying on information that COC didn't see, so it didn't, couldn't have any opportunity to comment or make their own tweaks to this. I'm open to making the budget amendments. The question would be, can we approve the contract today without having the contractor here to agree to the amendments? Can we kick the can down the road? Because this current contract ends on the 31st. So if the goal is to avoid an interruption in services, which I strongly support, I don't think we need to be haggling over the contract at this point. It's kind of a yes or no vote to me. But if there is time to confer with the Sunrise on whether the changes proposed here today are going to be acceptable, and we can bang that out, that's okay. But I don't see them here. So I guess the question would be, if we tweak this outside of what's already been reviewed and approved by COC, or recommended for approval by COC, do we actually have time to finish that haggling and get this thing signed before the current contract extension expires?
So if I can respond to some of that, if you look at the attachments that are on this item, you'll see the last amendment, and it'll say through July 23. We knew that the process would give, give us a little bit of an awkward moment, where there's two days where we're outside of the contract already. We know that Behavioral Health has the ability to spend a certain amount on their own without approval from the county. So those two days would be covered if today we just said shut down. But the idea was to bring it to us as soon as possible so that we can look at the potential for the extension. Again, my goal today is not to shut down the shelter. I think that human lives need that shelter to be there. But I just am unwilling, this is a perfect example and reason as to why I'm unwilling to keep moving forward for 90 days. I wouldn't mind a 30-day extension so that we could figure out what else we're going to do, because there is too much, too many red flags happening at that shelter, and I don't want to be good enough. I want to make sure we're changing lives and providing the services required. Now I'm just going to repeat myself, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
And if I may, just quickly respond to your response. 30 days is not enough. If we're going to extend it all, we need that full 90 days. There are red flags about shelter operations. To me, the red flag is about COC and its status vis-à-vis the county. And I need some time to address that. And I don't think we can get that addressed in 30 days.
Yes. I would just like to offer that in the budget that is submitted with the current contract, the admin is at 10%. So that is something the COC has already approved. And the shuffling between the line items is, to me, somewhat insubstantial. And so that's just what I would like to offer as a thought.
I would definitely go with what was offered originally, not this one, is what I would go with.
Okay. And we have Stephen Carter.
Good morning, Board. Stephen Carter, interim behavioral health director for another week or so. Elise just hit on what I was going to recommend was that utilize the budget that is in the current agreement before you today. And then if your board feels like there should be some adjustments made, we can make the amendment and come back with an amended contract. And the reason for that is if we approve the old budget now, there's no gap in service and we can bring the amendment forward before the next time they bill.
Supervisor Crandall.
Was this, is this solely an extension or was there another process of like opening it up for an RFP or something along those lines?
Stephen, could you, or Elise, do you want to talk about how the RFP process went? Or Stephen, either one of you?
Elise can speak to that.
Okay.
I'm happy to do that. So this, we did have an RFP that, and we received, I believe, three different proposals for that. And the board reviewed those proposals and decided that none of them were sufficient and therefore decided to go out with another RFP, which should be ready for the executive committee to view by the end of this week at the latest. And so that, of course, will be approved and reviewed, of course, by Director Carter and whoever else may want to provide input. And so we are continuing to go out to RFP and to bid for these services. So there was one, and I guess you could say it was failed, but we're bringing this forward to ensure that there's continuity of services and we're reissuing the next RFP.
I just want to say I appreciate your on-the-fly problem solving recently, just with this project, this situation.
Thank you. Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, I'll just say since the executive committee meeting is a public meeting, we reviewed all three. The one who scored the highest is the contractor we're looking to extend with, but it was not approved to provide a three-year contract, which is what we were looking to do, because those flags exist and those concerns exist. I do want to speak about, those flags do equate to liability potentially for the County of Lake. It is our building. We've had issues at the building where we've had code enforcement have to deal with it or our public services have to deal with things. There have been internal issues within the agents, within the contractor. Those are not things that we can control, but that have been brought to our attention. And part of that included the pay that I brought up last time as well. That's definitely been rectified. I've reviewed the last of the submissions for payments that have been submitted to us, but those are still things that are embarrassing, things that are publicly known and to continue with this entity rather than having a greater conversation. We are going to go through the RFP process, but how much longer are we going to keep going with an agency that we know is putting us at risk and creating potential liabilities? So I'm okay with 30 days with bringing back a board of supervisor conversation and saying, what are we going to do in between this 30-day and the RFP process? We're restarting. We're saying it's okay for the people they're serving. We're saying it's okay for the tax dollars they're receiving. And we're saying it's good enough and I'm done with good enough. So.
Right. But is 30 days going to be enough time to?
We need to think outside of the box because this RFP process is not working for us and there is some opportunities and options. We just need to bring it to the board and discuss it.
Okay.
There's someone online.
Yeah, I'm going to open this up for public input and we've got Dr. Ryan Ava. I may have said that right. If you want to unmute, state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Ryan Ava. I'm the executive director for Sunrise Foundation. Thank you for this opportunity. And first I'd like to say that I agree with the amendments. As far as, you know, the organization goes, I can attest to the, you know, to the agreement. We can do those amendments. And to the, and I apologize, I'm not familiar with your names, but to the supervisors' comments, that is not good enough. I understand that and I hear you. I have been with the organization for a little over a month possibly, and we have done significant changes. And as you know, I personally, I not only agree with you, but I am also a person that I'm not good enough. Good enough is not good enough, I guess. That's what I should say. So we want to excel. And on that note, we have taken steps to rectify the situation and the concerns that was brought to my attention. One of them was to replace the current or previous director of operations and reducing the salary from $7,000 to $5,000, which I think that that's where the position should be at, and I agree with you. And the other part of it is to basically put a systemized process in place and make the process more efficient. Now, one of the other suggestions that I had, and we're trying to implement it, and as you can see on the item line, there are discounts that we can apply for our utilities that we weren't currently utilizing, because again, we are a nonprofit organization, you know, part of the low-income programs and everything that we need to utilize. Also, we were spending a lot of money on foods. Yes, donations are great, but there are different programs that we can utilize to reduce those costs. And that's part of the reason that you see that on the budget, that the food cost has been reduced because, and again, keep in mind that, you know, these changes take time. And as we go through this process and putting procedures and policies in place, we also have to be mindful of some trial and errors as we go through to figure out. And there's a lot of trainings that need to be done at the staff level and also with our new director. I have personally taken on task of basically mentoring Chris. And I think he has from your raw potential there. But at the same time, you know, leadership takes, takes not only talent, but also experience as well as, you know, good mentorship. I was fortunate enough to have those, you know, in my years. And that being said, and I'm a clinical psychologist by training. So I understand mental health. I understand leadership. I understand what goes behind all those things. So what I'm asking the boards to consider, please, is that A, 30 days is not enough. You know, extension of 90 days, I think, is appropriate. B, also to recognize the efforts that the foundation has done in that short amount of time to rectify those problems that has brought up to our attention previously. One of those big changes was bringing me on board and basically putting me in charge of seeing what's going on and making those changes. So I understand, I empathize, and I agree with you that good enough is no longer good enough, and I thrive for excellence. So that being said, I, again, I agree with the changes. We can do that, but give us some time as we're working through this process and making this place an excellent place of service. And I believe 90 days is appropriate and to give everyone enough time to move forward and make the appropriate changes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ava. I did give you more than three minutes because.
Thank you.
Yeah. But we do, I will open it up for other public comment, and because you're the contractor, I did give you more time, but just a reminder to the public that it is three minutes for public input. I'm not seeing any other hands in the Zoom room, and I'm wondering if there's anyone in the chambers, and we do have someone in the chambers.
Good morning, Chair and Board. My name is Brad Rasmussen. I'm police chief in Lakeport. I'd like to speak in favor of extending this emergency contract while the RFPs are being worked on. I personally don't think 30 days is going to get it there. I do, I can't disagree with Supervisor Sabatier's comments about some of the concerns, but what I'd like to focus on is if we were to close that facility, it's going to be detrimental to the people that are using it and also the community. Over the past six months, in my daily work with the homeless on the streets of Lakeport where many of the residents come from, you know, I interact with them and see the impacts. And the last time that we had a situation like this where the shelter closed, it was detrimental and we saw some severe impacts to the people and the community. So while I agree, there's concerns, I have concerns of my own, but I think we need to keep it going and then focus on, you know, the RFPs and get something more permanent in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spatier?
I got a question. Trying to find how I can get into a comfort zone with this. Would it be possible to come back within two weeks? And I'm not looking solely at behavioral health. I think public services, I think, public services, public health, social services. Who can we place as employees in the facility to ensure that we are going to get what we need and we're dealing with the concerns? I know we stop by every Friday and we have a little quick check-in, but that's like 30 minutes or an hour out of all of that time. I would feel more comfortable, I don't want to staff the whole thing because that's not going to be possible. We have so many other people that we need to touch every single day. But what would, I'd like to come back with, what is an opportunity for us to make sure that we're there so that we're dealing with the problems right away so we can say, take out the garbage, please, which is one of the issues that we've had multiple times where we've had to deal with that? Or dealing with the, are we making sure that we're asking people if they have any symptoms before they walk in so we can make sure to separate them into the right wings or things like that? I would be more comfortable with saying yes today with the original budget that was submitted for the 90 days. If yes, in two weeks, we can come back and say, here are some proposals on how we can do that. I don't want to force anybody in a situation because that conversation hasn't happened, but I would feel more comfortable if that was a possibility and a conversation we have to try and make sure that we are watching our liability and minimizing our risk. Because we just had a chief of police from Lakeport. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Bradmussen. Rasmussen, said both your first and last name together. If there's concerns from a law enforcement side, I have concerns from the board of supervisor side. We obviously need to figure out a way to not say it's going to be fine for 90 days, but how are we going to do more? And if that's something that everybody can agree in consensus to bring that back in two weeks for that conversation, then I can say yes to an extension to 90 days with the original budget that was offered with the date changes.
So we have a 90-day contract, which I think we need because I think 30 days is too short, and we want to make sure that we've got coverage while we're going through this RFP process. But we do have termination available within that 30 days. And speaking with interim director Carter, I think it's 14 days. So there is ability to make changes within the 90-day contract. But I do think it is appropriate to kind of come back in a couple of weeks with a plan that shows us how the contract's going to be managed. And I don't know that we need to devote staff at this time, but you tell us the best way that you're going to be managing it so that we don't have these liability concerns going forward.
Duly noted, and I'd be happy to come back in a couple of weeks with that.
I know that dealing with those experiencing homelessness seems to have fallen in the hands of behavioral health, but that's not your problem, that's our problem. And so I hope that we can get more departments involved in the conversation than just you coming back to us in a couple of weeks with, here's what we can do. I really, that's what I would hope. It's not just you sitting in front of us, but others as well to say, these are the options. That's a very heavy weight to lift as one department. We have entire communities, entire states trying to solve this and nobody is solving this. So I just want to make sure you don't feel like that burden. I want to spread that burden to as many of us because it's our problem to solve.
Supervisor Green.
It's like Dr. Dolittle here, there's a push-me-pull-you going on. On the one hand, we have a contract extension, which very clearly calls out Sunrise as an independent contractor, and yet we want to put staff onsite to monitor, we want to change line items on the fly and stuff like that. So we have to choose as a board and we have to choose as a COC, this freestanding entity that is not standing free in any meaningful way from behavioral health. What do we want to be? Do we want to be onsite managers and reduce our risk to the point that it's non-existent? Then we better be going in a different plan than doing an RFP for an independent contractor. If we're going to stick with the independent contractor model, as we should, to reduce our liability, we put it on the contractor. But if we have both, an independent contractor and then we go in trying to micromanage their operations day-to-day, we are not reducing our liability. We're just meddling in a contract. And going back to, close enough isn't good anymore, same thing with COC. We have some work to do with COC to establish its organizational footing so that everyone is very clear where COC begins, where behavioral health ends, where the county ends, where the contractor is. And it's nobody's fault that we have spent years trying to bootstrap COC into whatever it is right now, but we haven't finished the work, at least not from the county side. You know, I know COC has gone through any number of iterations of its bylaws.
But let's stay on our agenda.
Okay. Well, I would just like us to do the three-month extension without throwing everything in the kitchen sink at it. I do intend to bring an item back in two weeks so we can talk about COC. If you want to bring back an item on the same agenda, so we can talk about supplemental staffing for the interim, I'm certainly open to that, if that gets you to your comfort level. But I need a comfort level that this process is going to work before we start sending out RFPs again. If we are going to send out RFPs again, I'd just sooner be on the county side than the COC side at this point. So lots to talk about, but to stick to the item, let's get this contract extension done. And we have a lot to talk about, about mitigating our risks, whether through a contractor, whether through some staffing, whether through some combination thereof. And part of the things we need to fix is COC.
So real quick, the board of supervisors will never fix the COC. The COC needs to review the COC because it is not a board of supervisor agency or committee. And two, more along the lines of what Chair Pyska offered, which is to come back in a couple of weeks on managing this contract and ensuring that the outcomes and the policies approved within the contract are being followed. That is more vague than anything specific, and I prefer it to be vague so that staff can come with creative thinking and creative solutions to make sure that we are doing this correctly. If that is approved by consensus of the board, then I am okay with moving forward within 90 days. But all alone, knowing the red flags and ignoring the fact that those red flags still exist and our liability, I am not comfortable with. So that additional makes me comfortable.
Okay. And we've got our interim director, Stephen Carter, have final comments?
I was going to say, well, Bruno kind of wrapped it up, but for a comfort level, the 14-day written notice from the county to cancel the agreement should put a little bit of comfort in there because if something drastic does happen, we can move relatively quickly. And I do agree with coming back in two weeks with some more information, not just from behavioral health on how we can monitor and make sure things are working properly.
Okay. So we have consensus for the coming back in two weeks and getting a plan?
Yes.
And we're going to leave it very open for you and your creativity? And let's move forward with approving the contract. And?
There's nothing further. I move to approve amendment number two to the agreement between the County of Lake and Sunrise Special Services Foundation, increasing the total compensation under the agreement to $460,800 for fiscal years 2022, '23, and '23, '24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Okay. For clarity, is that what the budget presented today? That is the changes that we've discussed?
With the amendment.
for fiscal years 2022, '23, and '23, '24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Okay, for clarity, is that what the budget presented today? That is the changes that we've discussed?
With the amendments for the dates, because the dates stopped on August 23rd, we want to make sure to extend those to October 24th, or else it's a 30-day, not a 90-day. So those amendments?
The budget in, as it was presented in the contract, was fine. So the budget in here is not being amended, but the dates are?
Yes.
With the dates as suggested for amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And it's 10:36. We will take a break and come back at 10:45. Oh, I'm sorry, one moment. CIO Parker?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have a time gap to 11:15, we're in next public hearing.
Yeah.
With the board's guidance, we could go into closed session, take a five-minute break, come back, or 10-minute break?
Sure.
Get prepared to go into closed session, then come back into public session for the 11:15 and the 11:30.
Okay, so we will come back in 10 minutes and go into closed session and then come back for our 11:15 item. Okay, welcome back. We are going to move into closed session and then we'll come back out. We're going to look at 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.91. Fork Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And 8.2, Conference with Real Party Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.8. Property APN 0130560416540, State Highway 175 Cobb, California. Negotiating parties, A, county negotiators, L, Ewing, Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, and Robert Varden, Varden, under negotiation. Price and terms of payment. And with that, we'll move into closed session and come back out for public, to continue public session. Okay, welcome back to our open session. We only tackled 8.1. We'll have to go back in closed session a little bit later and do 8.2, but do we have any action taken in closed session?
Madam Chair, no action was taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have our 11:15 item. 6.6, Public Hearing Continued from July 11th, 2023. Sitting concurrently as Lake County Keys, CSA Number 1, Number 2, Number 6, Number 13, Number 20, Number 21. Board of Supervisors, Kelseyville County Waterworks District 3 and Lake County Sanitation District, Board of Directors. Consideration of A, Resolution Confirming Collections of Annual Lighting Fees, and B, Resolution Confirming Collections of Delinquent Water Fees, C, Resolution Confirming Collection of Delinquent Water and Sewer Fees, D, Resolution of Delinquent Sewer Fees for Lake County Sanitation District. This is special districts, and we've got Director Harder in the room. Come on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As was noted, this is an agenda item, a public hearing for the confirmation of placing collection of lighting fees on the annual tax roll as well as consideration of placing delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax roll. This item was originally considered on July 11th. A supermajority was not present. One is required to adopt these resolutions, so a four-fifths vote of the board members would be required to adopt these resolutions and place the liens on the property taxes. So that's what we're here for today. We we opened the public hearing two weeks ago, continued it to today. To date, we've only received two complaints, concerns, protests. Mr. St. Clair, who was here two weeks ago, and Ms. Ferris. We're dealing with both of those. We've involved county council in the matter for Ms. Ferris. There are some legal questions she's brought up, so I've asked for assistance from county council's office. But that's what we're here to consider today. The board did ask for additional information and a list of the properties, understanding that that's a snapshot in time and a picture in time because as people pay their bills and are no longer delinquent, we would not be moving them forward to the tax roll. That was provided, that was generated last Monday, subsequent to July 15th, which was the final date in the posting that was provided to the public.
Okay. Comments from the board? Supervisor Spatier?
So my comment is a difficult comment. Number one, I do not want to stop us from being able to capture delinquent fees. Services are provided, infrastructure is maintained. That costs money, and so this is not a a free service. However, I do have, and I'm opening up right now, I'm looking at the all sewer areas list. And like, for example, on the first one, it says that they owe $111.76. The bill is over 60 days, but there is zero due over 90 days and there is zero due over 120 days. Meaning that these are bills, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Director Harder, these are bills that are every 60 days. I know that I receive my sewer bill every 60 days, meaning they missed the last bill.
Correct.
And I just think that's too fast to go, and I do recognize on the bottom of the bill, it does say if it's over 60 days, it's eligible for a tax lien assessment. So all that is allowed within our code and within the state code. But I just feel we're not necessarily, we're taking a very strong step too quickly. I I don't want to stop us from doing that, but if it's, you missed one bill, I feel people should have a chance to be able to catch up. Maybe they were sick, maybe they were on vacation, maybe they had a credit card saved that expired and they forgot to update their credit card. And to have their name, their address, and the fact that they missed a bill, and now we're going to be potentially sending this to the assessor's office to assess the property, add it into the system. And then, Deal, we've had a lot of conversations about tax defaulted properties. Now, I'm assuming that since they don't have anything over 120 days, that they most likely will pay their bill, and so maybe some of those things won't happen. But again, it just feels like a strong step to take for somebody that may have made a mistake. Or maybe they had a bad month and they couldn't afford it and they're going to catch up on the next one. I I just, anything that's over 120 days, or maybe to simplify it, anything within the 2022 calendar year makes sense to me to move forward with tax liens and assessing their properties to capture those funds, those delinquent funds that we have not received. But when I see that there's zero over 90 days or zero over 120 days, which I think there's at least six or seven of these in the first iteration in the Anderson Springs area, I just feel like it's taking too quick of a step and too strong of a step rather than really trying to work with the people that we're providing a service to in order to get them to get their bills paid. So that's that's kind of what I wanted to bring up, is I appreciate the level of detail that you've provided us. Maybe too much detail?
70 pages plus on that report.
Well, I I feel like names is 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 an unnecessary part and maybe just customer ID number within a certain jurisdiction would be more appropriate rather than possibly embarrassing people if, because this is very public. But when I see the over 60 days and the zero on the others, I feel like we have some ability to give them a chance to make right rather than automatically go through a very strong-arm process of assessing their properties. So I don't know how that goes with the rest of the board. I just wanted to bring up the discussion. I don't know if that's something we can change today. That sounds difficult. If that's something we could change in the future, but I'd love to hear from the board of how, what their thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I I agree. The 60-day, over 60-day and under 90-day is just, it's unfair. And so I'm wondering if you do have thoughts about just, because we do this annually in the summer.
Correct.
Correct. And if, so if we just focus on the previous calendar year, it will give that six-month window buffer for people to get hold or?
I think shifting midstream this cycle would be rather challenging, but I can certainly appreciate the board's consideration of of how that comes off and how that appears. If you do look through those 70 pages of all sewer, if you scroll down to like Lake Ocean 1, you'll probably notice, however, that most of them don't have anything. There's zero balance for over 60. Most of them are over 90 or 120. So the majority of of the delinquent accounts are not within that first 60-day window, but I do appreciate that it does seem heavy-handed potentially and could come across that way to our customers and and certainly willing to explore lengthening that out, stretching out, making it 120 or making it the, you know, the prior fiscal or prior calendar year. There's a lot of moving parts involved with this. It's not just our department. It involves the assessor, excuse me, the auditor controller's office. So when the list is generated, we we generated the list, like I mentioned earlier. We will continue to update that list up until five days prior to when it asks to the tax collector's office. So five days prior to when it goes to the tax collector's office, we generate that list one last time and we run that by to the auditor and controller. And so her office has to review and approve sending all those pieces forward. So like I said, lots of moving parts, lots of different departments involved. So I think changing it this year would be challenging, but certainly open to changing and adjusting and lengthening that timeline for future cycles.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments, but yeah, I'm looking at the water code and this is like, once a year we get to do this, so you take the snapshot in time and do the best. It's a little unclear whether we can, I assume we could internally create some metrics. So whether it's an age-out list or just a fixed dollar amount, whether even it's 120 days, if it's under 1,000 bucks or whatever, we wouldn't necessarily go to the lien. But to your point, yeah, we're kind of mid midstream right now. So I think we have to to do the process as it exists right now and maybe bring back an item later after we get all the liens assessed this year to create that threshold, but we don't have one right now. So it was proceeding with what we got as presented.
Okay.
Just one one last question.
Sure, go ahead.
The headers on the report, and I'm guessing this is just an automated report based on the software that you're using. It just, it doesn't make sense necessarily for a bill that you receive every 60 days. That's why it says zero for the 60 or under, but then it's all filled into 90 because it's only differences of 30 days after that. It goes 60, 90, 120. But if you receive a bill every 60 days and there's no reminder in between and you happen to have missed one but you don't know, just wondering if it's possible to change the date range within those columns because the date ranges don't match the actual bill statements?
I'm not certain if it's possible to change the date rates, like you like you indicated. That's generated from our billing software.
Yeah.
Which is sometimes rather cumbersome to to get customer reports out of. Has a lot of power, but sometimes you're limited in what you can pull out of it.
Yeah.
But yeah, that 90 days is an odd one. If you're past 60, but you're not past 120 yet, I think that's where it's going to fall.
Yeah, because I'm seeing some that are filled on the over 60, then there's zero on over 90s. And it's like, oh, well, they paid the middle bill.
Yeah.
And that's not the case.
And the reasoning behind that is because about half of the districts are on odd months and half are on even months.
Yeah.
So we run on a two-month billing cycle and we stagger the billing.
Yeah, I I, if there's a solution that feels more comfortable and fair coming in the future, I'm okay with moving forward. It's the first time this has been brought up. But I think that if we are looking at, as of July 1st or whenever it is that we bring this to the board of supervisors, that we're looking at the previous calendar year, that way we've delayed your collection of these delinquent fees by six months, but we didn't eliminate the collection of those fees. It's just delayed. And then afterwards, it'll keep moving forward and there's no more delay. So it's a one-time, six-month delay. And I think that's fair, that if you haven't paid your bill through 2022, you've had ample chance, you've had six months, seven months to catch up. At that point, trying to go through the the more strong-arm approach of assessment is is, I think, the appropriate move, way to move forward. So I'm okay with moving forward if that's something that there's consensus from the board to, for you to come back with, I don't know, a resolution or an ordinance to change that in our code. That would be better.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got some members from the public. If you want to come on up to the podium here, you can state your name and you will have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Ferris. I'm here to oppose a bill. Article I, Section 10, Clause 1 of the United States Constitution states that the contract clause, when people start utility services, they enter into a contract. It's not the parcel who enters into the contract, it's the person. So I don't believe that my grandfather, who's been deceased for 13 years, it should go on to his property tax. I believe that the utility company should have took reasonable effort to find out who the responsible party was. We had squatters in there and I've been trying to resolve the issues. It's actually been red-tagged for over a year now. So they've already put $4,000 on our property taxes and they're continuing when they're not providing a service to us. There is no toilet. It's red-tagged. It's unoccupied, you know. And the the contract clause prohibits state governments from specifically legislating to interfere with private contract rights. Given that my grandfather is deceased, I don't believe that the property should be responsible for that since he's been deceased for 13 years. And the utility company has been notified on several separate occasions and they did nothing. And even when Department of Environmental Health and Safety came and red-tagged the property, we asked the sewer company to come out and they refused.
Who refused?
The sewer company. I've been in their office several times. This bill that they're talking about is over six years delinquent. They have policy that after 18 months, they're supposed to come, cut and cap the line, which they never did. They continued to build the property for six years for delinquent sewer. I just got granted administration of the estate in February.
Okay. Director Harder?
A little more complicated and convoluted. Not all the $4,000. I believe the back taxes on that property are up to about $12,000. $4,000 is in penalties, not related to our department. There's about 2,400 roughly that's been placed in liens over the last six years on that property from our department. The rest of it is outstanding in back taxes that haven't been paid. Our sewer use ordinance requires that if we are to stop billing for sewer service and availability, because our sewer use ordinance provides for service and availability for service. So if there is a lateral to the property, even if it's not being occupied and used as a house, there is the possibility for inflowing infiltration, contamination to get into our sewer system, into our collection system. So as long as that lateral is in working order, then the property is billed for that. Whether that goes with the property or with the utility owner, that's why I've involved county council and we're working through those issues and trying to resolve this with Ms. Ferris. But the property owner is responsible for notifying the district if there's a change of ownership. The property owner is responsible for disconnecting that lateral if they'd like to stop being billed for sewer service. Ms. Ferris has been advised of that. I even made an offer recently via email that, you know, there are options in our ordinance which allow us to, we don't typically go and disconnect people's sewer service. That's just not how it operates. She did point out, it does say in there, if it's delinquent more than 18 months, we do have that option, requires a posting of the property, requires a public hearing in front of the board of directors of the sanitation district. And then if so, then the the district can move forward, forcibly disconnect that lateral and then assess a one-time penalty of $500 to the property. The unusual thing in this situation is that, in reality, nothing on the the sewer account ages past 12 months because every 12 months it rolls to tax roll, so we never really do see that 18 months. However, the taxes haven't been paid, the sewer bill hasn't been paid, as she indicated, for about six or seven years. So that that is a possibility that we can move forward on. To her point, she brought up U.S. Constitution law, contract clause, all those sort of things. It's at that point that I handed it off to county council. That's really beyond my area of expertise. I'd like to work with her to resolve this, but that's what we're doing.
So just very briefly, the procedures applicable here are essentially California Health and Safety Code, Sections 5473 onwards. And with, subject to certain exceptions, all laws applicable to the collection of general taxes of the entity would apply to these, to these utilities. Under, I think, direct administrator, Harder already mentioned, the collection and enforcement part of that, as far as the lien enforcement, that's under the Lake County Code. Section 722, which states, actually it's 722 of of- Section 722, which states, actually it's 722 of Appendix A, the Lake County Code, where in delinquent charges shall be collected at the same time and in the same manner as general county taxes. And if you, it cited on the resolution too, as far as the Sections 5470 onwards of the Health and Safety Code, that with certain exceptions, the amount of the charges shall also constitute a lien against a plot or parcel of land against which the charge has been imposed as of noon on the first Monday in March immediately preceding the date of levy. So these are the procedures that special districts has utilized across all properties that are subject to these delinquent charges. And, and that would be the, the response. That's what the, your board has the discretion, that's why we're here before this hearing, where your board may adopt, revise, change, reduce, or modify any charge or overrule, any or all objections at this hearing and shall make a determination upon each charge as described in said report, taking into consideration that, that Scott Hard, Scott Harder, Mr. Harder has met, has stated that he is a special district, he is willing to work with the, with the property owners on this, on this issue. And under Section 5473.2, if the, if your board finds that protest is made by the owners of a majority of separate parcels of property, then your board has that discretion to not adopt the report. Those are the applicable statutory provisions that are, that are in play essentially for your board's consideration at this public hearing.
What's the address of the properties?
7268 Liberty Street, and I have paid back property taxes. I've paid in $4,000 back property taxes because the county was trying to seize the property. But he also noted that he talked about Health and Safety Code, but when I told them that Health and Safety Code and feces were on the property, the utility service refused to come out and cap the line, which should have been done then instead of continue to bill us for an entire year.
Where is this street?
It's in, on Liberty Street in Nice.
Oh, in Nice, okay.
Antoinette has called me before. This is really prevalent in the district, I'm pretty sure in everyone's district, but I know in Nice and Lucerne, these properties belong to someone who's passed and then it becomes an issue with whoever inherits it and then people squat and it's very difficult to get onto the property or deal with it until someone finally is notified they own it or whatever the case may be. So I don't know, I think it's, it's just something that we need to figure out how to address. I mean, this isn't the only situation I've got calls about in situations like this and I just wanted to mention that. She has called me before about some of this and it's been difficult because the people won't leave.
I evicted them. We held out 70,000 pounds of trash and we resolved the issue, some of the issues with code enforcement and they still refused to remove the red tag. We don't even have a toilet at the property. We removed all facilities because it's not being used. All the pipes are cut, though it's not attached at all to the sewer system.
And what I do know, I understand that, but I know that there's, like I said, there's so many of these and the code enforcement's struggling to get to every single one. The reason I know is because I get calls about others. So they're doing, I know that they're doing their best. I know that special districts is doing their best as well. It looks like they'll work with you, so I'm hoping that that can carry forward.
I would think that they should bear some responsibility in the fact that they didn't try and find out why it was delinquent so, for so long and that the owners were deceased, both of them, since 2010 and 2017. Where is their responsibility in finding out if they're going to seize 879 properties in this county? How many of them are subject to the same thing?
And when did, so you don't mind me asking, Madam Chair, when did the family find out who was the rightful owner following the?
So the will was tied up. The attorney who did the will, his office burnt to the ground and he was disbarred here in Lake County. And so we didn't have a copy of the will. It was actually held in an evidence locker to the person who was supposed to be executor of the estate. I recently got a copy of that after four and a half years since it was my grandfather's married wife. We had no legal claim to the property until we could produce that will and we didn't have it.
Okay, I was just wondering.
If I may, part of our challenge is, you know, we have 30,000 to 35,000 customer accounts. We cannot ascertain when each one changes ownership. It's, it's the property owner's responsibility to notify us of an ownership change. And then what we do to verify that is we look for the recorded deed. So if there is not a recorded deed indicating property ownership change, we don't change the responsibility, the responsible party on that utility account because, you know, that's how fraud happens. Someone else comes in, so I'm living here now and then they start, you know, taking over and, and paying the utilities on it and although if someone wanted to pay my PG&E bill, I guess I wouldn't object, but. So that change of ownership within our, within our accounting system is driven by a deed change, a recorded deed change. And I'm not sure when that happened, but I know if it happened, it's only been recently because the last time I checked, it was still in the grandfather's name.
Okay. So I have a question. Do either of you have a recommendation on how you want to move forward with this?
No, I mean, he said he'd work with her, so.
Okay, so remove it from the list or keep it on the list and work?
It's up to.
His working with me is wanting to bill me $500 to cap the line. I don't think that we should be responsible for these if the property is red-tagged and we're not using the facilities and there are no pipes to use those facilities. They continue to build the property for six years for the same exact thing and they didn't make any effort to reach anyone. And they actually did receive a copy of a power of attorney for who was supposed to be the responsible party and I'd been into their office many times with death certificates, giving them information that he was deceased. I think that they should have taken some responsibility to find out who the responsible party was since they had a power of an attorney.
And to that point, the power of attorney is only valid while the person is living and it says that in that exact power of attorney that she provided us. So once the individual has passed, then that person no longer has power of attorney. And again, the sewer service availability is there. It's, it's the customer's responsibility to disconnect that if they want to stop being billed for sewer service. She can hire a contractor, but as indicated, there is provision within the ordinance which would allow us to do it. Yes, there's a $500 fee. It's probably going to cost more than $500 in materials and service for my labor and my staff to go out and do that, but I'm willing to do that. When I offered and asked if that's how she wanted us to proceed, she deflected and responded with the U.S. Code of Constitution and then the contracts code and didn't answer that question. At that point, when she started citing contract law, I deferred to county council. That's still an option we're willing to proceed with. I'd like to close this out so it's no longer a burden on her. But the sewer service and the availability has been there previously and historically. It could cause potential issues to our collection system, I and I, even if there's not fixtures out there, if there's squatters out there, are they illegally using the system? Are they dumping contaminants, chemicals down our system? Those are all concerns. That's why our ordinance is written the way it is. That says in order to stop the billing, it has to be cut and capped properly at the property line. I'd like to make that happen with her.
I take his recommendation.
Okay. All right, do we have anyone else?
So is this going to be removed from the calendar?
I don't think it, I don't think it is.
That's, that's at the board's discretion. We could, we could not roll it to the tax rule. However, in my opinion, it's still an outstanding utility bill that's due. Services were available, you know, the, the way we stop the bill moving forward is get it cut and capped.
So keep it on?
At the board's discretion either.
I defer to him.
Okay, Supervisor Spatier?
I think we're going back and forth here as to who's trying to make this decision. I want to take a couple steps back. Something was mentioned and I, I feel like we're in agreeance that it says that within 18 months, there's an option.
Correct.
I think we have an issue if we're clearing it every 12 months and we're not seeing the overall timeline. I'd like to rectify that.
Yeah.
Because that makes no sense.
Yeah.
If we're making somebody pay for six years, whatever the amount of time is, and we're way past 18 months and we're just restarting the zero months every 12 months, we're not helping ourselves and we're not helping that, that property. Because again, the service is to the property, it's not to the individual, it's to make that connection for the sanitary services. I want to make sure that we come back with something to resolve that. Somehow either we need to make that be 12 months so that it's easier, that if we're saying you're 12-month overdue, we're going to have to cap it, or figure out a way to track so that we can get to the 18 months and then make that option be available. I don't know what the answer is, but I'd like for something to come back to us to resolve that because that seems to be a larger issue than just what's here in front of us, which is just the last 12 months. I know from our conversation that none of these will be brought to the assessor's office until, and that date's probably been pushed back because of the, us moving it from the 11th to the 25th, but it was somewhere around late August or something like that, that it would go to the assessor's office for the assessments?
It's typically mid-August and, and our schedule doesn't shift that at all. That's set in state law.
So that gives us about two to three weeks?
Correct. And I've got no problem not rolling this over this cycle. If we want to exclude this property, I'm completely fine with that. That'll allow us to work together to try and find resolution.
Is it, and I'll let the supervisor for that district to make any further comment. I'm, I'm okay whether we pull it or not, but I'm more concerned about ensuring that we don't continue to add more costs, more burdens on a property if it's unnecessary just because, as you know, I've worked really hard on the tax default situation, Lucerne, Nice area, the city of Clear Lake has been really impacted. If we can reduce by blocking some of those assessments on those properties for unnecessary burdens, those are all good things. So that, that to me is my bigger issue and I'm willing to follow the direction of the supervisor whose district is being discussed.
And the administrator stated that he feels it should stay on. I'm, I'm good with his recommendation. But if you feel he can work with her and we can remove it, I just don't want to set a precedent for others to come and make an argument for something that the county really doesn't have the, the onus to do. I mean, our administrator, Harder's right, we, we can't find out who owns every property. We just have a list of whoever it is and whoever submits it or gets it in, what's that called, probate, then that's, that's on them, right? Is that, that's kind of what you were saying, right?
Correct, yeah. You know, we go off the deed and until, even if there's been a death, until there is a change in the deed or the recorded deed, then, then we're still billing the prior property owner, yes.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I want to be respectful of our existing process. So definitely I like the idea of working with any property owner that's kind of not in their happy place here, but I'd like to see the charge stay on there and that, that working out continue as we're being respectful to our process. So I want to acknowledge hearing some difficulties as far as what the county could or should have done, but I think in this particular case, there are also responsibilities that a family has, notwithstanding the responsive, you know, difficulties of the will and all of that. This is a long history of this and if we're really going to meet in the middle of the road, I think shared responsibility is, is a concept that we need to signal here. This is not all on the county. I am interested in bringing the process back, whether it's 12 or 18 months, stuff like that, and also looking for ways to, it may not be the final shoe that drops on this, but having some ability to call available data, whether it's death notices, probate notices in the newspaper, if we do have properties that are in distress and we have some early warning of that, even if we don't have all the legal ability to stop doing what we're doing under this process, at least we can identify distressed properties and bring it back to the board with some recommendations about how we can call that data from what's available, turn to other departments for some help in that regard. And, and so in addition to adjusting any timelines or stuff like that, any dollar amounts for what we're going to go after a lien for, maybe there is something we can do to better identify distressed properties that are probably going to go off the rails, probably going to go well over 120 days and just come up with a way to deal with that. But we can't do that today. But that'd be my druthers. I'd love to see the charge stay on there because it was incurred under our current process and I think that would actually encourage resolution of this rather than taking it off and possibly setting a precedent.
Okay. All right, do we have anyone else in the room today? Can you state your name and your property address, please?
Thank you. My name is Matthew St. Clair. The property address is 4219 Sunset Avenue, Clear Lake, California. I purchased the property from the tax default auction, June of 2022, received a bill from special districts prior to receiving the title of the property, went to special districts and requested identification of the lateral and it took more than a year for the lateral to be identified. If I could have, you know, 60 days from the time it was marked to cap it, I think that would be reasonable, being expected to pay for a year of service for an empty lot that special districts couldn't find the time to identify. I've worked with the administrator recently. We have made progress, but I've only had a couple of weeks from the time it was marked.
Director Harder?
I'm not certain, I didn't, I don't recall the details specific to Mr. St. Clair's case and whether or not, when his initial request came in and when we went out. Typically, we're not that poor on our response, but that very may well have been the case is that we did not respond timely to get markings out there for him. So I've got no problem working with him to issue credits or revise his bill accordingly.
Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, one question. The question we have here is a pull or not. Pull doesn't mean the money's not owed. It just means that we're not moving forward today with putting it as an assessed part. Sounds to me like the conversations have already begun. To me, that's, that's where we want to go is have the conversation, would, what, what is the, what is the, the time that it requires to, if it doesn't get resolved in the next 60 days, that this comes back to finalize type of thing, that it comes back to the board, is that?
That's that mid-August date. So five days before that mid-August date, basically anyone who's delinquent still at that time will be, that, that list will be generated. It essentially is finalized at that point in time, sent over to the auditor controller, reviews it for accuracy and completeness, then forwards that on to the tax collector's office, who then puts those liens on. So up until that point in time, issues can be resolved and worked out.
Because, because here's, we've had code enforcement assessments come to us. If you don't show up, then I'm, I'm ready to move forward. If you show up, I'm ready to listen and hear what you have to say. That doesn't mean that we're going to change anything. We may still assess, but the fact that you didn't just meet these people here today tells me that there's good conversation. You're mentioning that there's, there's potential options on the table.
Okay.
I'll be brief.
Your three minutes is up, Supervisor Spatier.
I just, I, I'm okay with postponing. We're not clearing the, the fees. We're not doing anything that is a bad precedent, but to say, hey, let's figure out where the conversation goes rather than the conversation taking longer than mid-August, which is pretty close from now.
It's very close.
And then having the property assessed for more and being burdened for more, if it's possible to postpone the two individuals that are in the room, I, I think everybody should have the ability to, and there's lots of people on this list. If everybody comes to your office, I think that's because we're looking for a solution and most likely you are getting phone calls, most likely you have other conversations. I'm, I'm okay with postponing, not clearing and not pulling the name off because again, that timeline is very close. Had we done it on July 11th, I'd say you have a full month to do it. But unfortunately, we didn't have the right individuals on these seats to make that decision, giving now these individuals less time based on this. That, that's, I, again.
But don't we have to do it in mid-August? Didn't you say it was legislated to do it that day?
It's, yeah, state law, that's when, that's when it moves forward. That's when the tax collector places it. So we can't postpone beyond that date.
But you do have a couple of weeks.
But we've got time off the books to work with them to resolve exactly, even if the board takes action to move forward today, adopting the resolutions to place all properties, which at the time are 60 days or more delinquent. It's, we're not placing the list that was on the, the agenda today because that's, as you noted, it's in flux. For example, when the list was first generated for the July 11th meeting, between that time and when staff generated the list, which is now on today's agenda, of the that time and when staff generated the list, which is now on today's agenda, um, of the delinquent sewer accounts, we received over 120,000 in payments. So, you know, they're, they're already making themselves not delinquent. That will continue to happen right up to that, that last date when we can possibly accept payments, um, even if the board moves forward to adopt the resolutions today, we'll still continue to receive payments, take people off the delinquent lists. We can still continue to work with both of the property owners here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room? Do we have anyone else in Zoom? Um, sure, you can come back up.
Is this for the water as well? It's Nice Mutual specifically or no?
No.
Okay.
Not our water district.
Just real quickly, I wanted to verify August 10th is that the state cutoff date, I believe?
That sounds correct, but, um, I hesitate to state that without any certainty.
I think that's what I saw on the water code site, yeah.
Okay, closing public comment and bringing it back to the board.
Checking in, uh, do we have consensus, uh, to request special district to come back and review that 15-month or 18-month or whatever it is? Just want to make sure before we move forward because it wasn't very clear to me, so thank you for that. And I would say at this moment in time, um, continue your conversations, please. I'm, I'm certain there are options, uh, whether those options are palatable to the property owner or not is, uh, from the perspective of the property owner, but I'm certain that we're looking at all potential options. And so, um, in digressing back, I, um, move to offer the resolution, I guess, is what I'm doing for the confirming collections of annual lighting fees. We got to go through each one individually?
Yes, the, uh, your board may go through each one of the resolutions separately, uh, in offering them.
So I offer the resolution for the annual lighting fees.
Director Swatier?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
Aye.
And Director Pyska?
Yes.
I move to, uh, sorry, I offer the resolution, uh, for the collections of delinquent water fees.
All right. Um, Director Swatier?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
Aye.
And Director Pyska?
Yes.
And I offer the resolution, uh, for the collections of delinquent water and sewer fees.
Okay. Director Swatier?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
Aye.
And Director Pyska?
Yes.
And I offer the resolution for delinquent sewer fees for Lake County Sanitation District.
Okay. Director Swatier?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
Aye.
And Director Pyska?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, I'll work on bringing back some, uh, potential revisions for that 15 or 18 months in the ordinance and see what we can do to kind of make that less vexing.
As well as, uh, the consensus was as well for the timeline of the, uh...
18 months. The delinquency before we consider rolling.
Yeah.
Oh, and as long as we're doing consensus, this is, uh, maybe we could also consider, uh, dollar, just fixed dollar amounts, even if they go over 120, not, not seeing consensus fit.
No, at that point, if you owe $50 from two years ago, we, it's still, uh, how are we going to collect it?
Well, there's also things like bad debt. If we're going to incur more cost collecting it or putting liens on, then we're actually going to get banged for the buck. Coming up with a, a set dollar amount, $1,000 or less, if we just put it off as bad debt would be something to at least look at, and we can reject it at that time, but it'd be interesting to look at that.
And I, I say no to that consensus. Uh, that is something you can bring, uh, on your own there.
Okay, 6.7, 11:30 a.m., public hearing. Consideration of Ordinance Amending Chapter 5 of Lake County Code and Adopting by Reference Appendix, Appendixes C and J of the 2022 California Building Code, Part 2 of the California Code of Regulations, Title 24, and we have Community Development Director Turner. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Raya Turner, Community Development Director. I also have our Chief Building Official, um, Bill Collins, to answer the techie questions that you might have. The item you have before you today is a draft ordinance, um, adding Appendix C and J to the building code updates that the board did this past March. Building code updates are done on a regular basis, about every three years, uh, and we use these new codes as our standards when we're evaluating, um, development. We inadvertently omitted C and J from this update, and so we're bringing them to you today to just sort of close that gap. Um, Appendix C regulates our agricultural structures, and Appendix J help, uh, helps regulate with grading. So I will turn it over to Bill if you have any...
Questions? Uh, we have Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I know we're just doing housekeeping and getting it adopted, but, uh, there was a comment made earlier this morning about ag exempt. So on page one of the document, uh, labeled Appendix C and J, uh, there's a table on page one of that six-page document, uh, Table C 102.1, which basically outlines allowable areas, uh, and maximum heights for that, and there's, uh, uh, several headings, 1, 2, 3, and 4 lumped together, and then 5 Roman numeral. So, uh, what, uh, what are those various classifications of these sizes of ag exempt buildings?
Uh, those are the type of construction. So, uh, uh, Type 1 is non-combustible materials. Uh, Type 2 is where the exterior structure is non-combustible, and then the interior stuff can be of any other thing approved in the code. As you go into Type 4 is, uh, is heavy timber. Type 5 is generally what we see here in Lake County, which is all, uh, like your home. It's, it's built of all combustible construction. Usually we see, uh, they, it's usually called a VB. It's, uh, it's a Type 5B. It's, uh, you can build it with anything in the code, even though it's, uh, it's combustible. And basically what they're saying is if you build something out of brick and steel, uh, they're less concerned about getting occupants out before the place burns down, so they're going to give you a little bit more area in there.
I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. I just, I just want to highlight that based on the building material and the size of the building, although our current ordinance appears to only allow ag exempt buildings on parcels, 10 acres and up, uh, if you were to slice and dice a portion of this table and consider at some future point, uh, whether smaller buildings or certain types of building materials and smaller sizes, uh, could fit on smaller parcels, uh, might be something worth looking at. I don't think we're at that point right now, but, uh, that type of flexibility was, uh, raised as potential. I think there probably is at least potential to consider that. Uh, I think however that, uh, 10-acre minimum got passed 10 years ago or so, whatever it was, it would allow for any of these type of ag exempt buildings to be considered for that parcel. But if there was a way to consider whether a subset of these allowed, uh, structures could fit on smaller parcels where ag isn't allowed use, that may be a flexibility we are going to look at. So I just want to mention that as a gentle suggestion for future, and that's my only question.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, the reason why there is a 10-acre minimum is because as the parcels get smaller, they're less likely to be used for primary agriculture. They become more like a ranchette, so it's primary residential use, in which case an ag exempt structure is inappropriate.
Supervisor Swatier?
I know in, uh, submitting the, uh, request for the changes to the ag exempt, changes to dry sheds and so on and so forth, that went through a whole process. I had offered, and it was moved to the, uh, task force to lower it to five acres. It came back to 10 acres. Obviously, many people got engaged in that conversation, uh, and we approved it to not change and stay at the 10 acres. So we've already had some of these in-depth conversations, and it came back with the recommendation to keep it at 10. So I just wanted to at least, uh, provide that feedback, that it's not the first time that that conversation has occurred, uh, and that's, uh, we, we remain where we are at this moment in time. So just wanted to add to that, but yeah, no, let's, uh, add these back in and, uh, make sure that we can move forward.
Okay, do we have any public comments? I'm not seeing anybody in the room, and I'm not seeing anyone in Zoom room, so I'll bring it back to the board.
Just quick follow-up. That discussion, was that a cannabis discussion or just a general discussion? Because I think the ordinance I was looking at, uh, dates back to 2013. So you're, you're saying they're more recent conversations involving cannabis greenhouses or ag exempt structures or, uh, ag exempt structures generally?
So it was submitted to the task force and to the ag advisory for review, uh, as it was originally about all ag, which ag includes cannabis. It came back to us as a cannabis, um, uh, hoop house ordinance, uh, not an ag hoop house ordinance, and in the midst of it all, it also said no changes to ag exempt regulations. So it was reviewed and it did come back.
Thank you.
Okay, action?
Just one, uh, I'm going to read, uh, a question from a constituent, Holly Harris. First, uh, just three different, uh, two different, uh, references. One, um, in section 2 of the ordinance itself, "All ordinances and resolutions in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict and no further." And, and number two, it says, "In the code itself, see group U agricultural buildings under user," and the note is, "About this appendix, agricultural buildings are given special consideration in Appendix C. Often such buildings have unique uses and structural needs where an agriculture building is surrounded by 60 feet of open area on all sides. Size limits are waived. Automatic sprinkler protection may be required." The question is, does that mean that if a hoop house is surrounded by 60 feet on all sides, it could actually be 300 by 400 feet, uh, which would be against the fire department's limit of 150 feet in the hoop house ordinance per the statement in section 2 of the ordinance? Long question. Just wanted to make sure I read it.
Well, I think that the, that the ordinance that we passed before was a, was a, uh, a building, an ag exempt. We were given, we were allowing them to get an ag exempt for a hoop house without coming and getting a building permit, and we set out some guidelines of this would be the max we would allow on size. Even though we're adopting this, I don't believe that that would change that. I think this is giving options to people that want to, uh, get a building permit for other things as well, and if they want their hoop house to be bigger, they can always get a hoop house, uh, permit from us, so we can, uh, assess it for, uh, code requirements, you know, fire, uh, getting a fire engine to it, EMS to it, things like that, um, access, how they're going to get in and out of the thing. In my interpretation, because it's, I don't see any place in the code that says that these agricultural buildings to this size are necessarily permit-free or there's no permit for them. I think that's a determination made by the county. I think this is giving what an agricultural building could be and, and what we're thinking we would want to allow versus, uh, the California code just saying that it, because we adopted this appendix, that you can have an agricultural building that's a, uh, 27 or 60,000 square feet without a permit. I think this is just another tool for us to assess agricultural buildings versus, because nowhere in here does this say that these are necessarily agriculturally exempt up to that size, of what I've read anyways.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, ready for action?
Just not further, uh, move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only and advance the ordinance to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for adoption.
Supervisor Green, if I may?
Yes.
I would suggest just separating the two motion, separating it into two separate, uh, motions. First motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance, as you said, to be read in title only.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So it's an, it's an ordinance amending chapter 5 of the Lake County Code and adopting by reference Appendixes C and J of the 2022 California Building Code, Part 2 of the California Code of Regul- Regulations, Title 24.
Thank you.
And move to advance the, uh, ordinance to the next Board of Supervisors meeting, which looks to be, uh, August 1st for final adoption.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you both so much. The final item that we have to date is our, um, calendar, but I would first like it to, like to pass this, um, off to County Council for introduction.
Well, it's my, uh, members of the board, uh, it's my pleasure to introduce Joseph Wagner as our new deputy county council.
I'm sorry, what was his name?
Joseph Wagner. Joe, uh, our new, uh, deputy county council in our office. Just wanted to introduce you.
Welcome, Joe. Where are you coming from?
Mendocino County.
Okay, great. Awesome, well, welcome. Nice to meet you. All right, who's ready?
I'll do it.
Okay.
So...
Buckle up.
I, I'm not going to go into great detail. Um, I still need to kind of go through all the information that I gathered. Both Chair Pyska and myself were at the NACO Annual Conference in Travis County in the city of Austin, uh, learned a lot about, uh, mental health, how do, uh, the, the word of the day was interoperability, uh, meaning how do we get multiple agencies, multiple departments to really work together, share information together, and not allow cracks to appear in between? And so, mental health was a large, uh, topic of conversation. Homelessness was a large topic of conversation. Recidivism in our jail system was a large topic of conversation. Also went to, um, listen in to an art, um, presentation of how arts are economic development for your community, um, how to really engage more than just providing murals. And I think in having a conversation with Chair Pyska, we mentioned how the, uh, Middletown Arts Center is really engaged in that way with the community by offering classes, by offering a, uh, facility to make those things happen, not just exhibiting it. Again, I, I really need to think through, uh, and, and write down. I just, uh, exhausted yesterday coming into the afternoon and making sure I was prepared for this meeting, uh, but absolutely inspiring, um, obviously the connections and the networking that occurs there. I think that both Chair Pyska and myself did a really good job of connecting with a, a large number of individuals, uh, got to go through all the business cards and all the connections, uh, but, um, I learned a lot, and while the statement of we can do better sounds like we're not doing good, I think our staff does a great job with what we are asking them to do, but I think we need to look at greater options and greater opportunities, uh, to really get the maximum amount potential out of, um, in, in our community. So I, I'm going to be brief on that because I want to make sure also that what I talk about is not in a Brown Act violation in the sense of really discussing policy, because that's a lot of what we saw and discussed during those conferences, and so maybe some of these will trickle in as, um, agenda, uh, items for us to really discuss and, and dive into, into deeper detail. As far as tomorrow, um, I'm going to be, uh, joining the Fire Chiefs meeting. We do have a canceled first five lake, uh, but I need to catch up and figure out that we are looking for public input, and I believe that's on Thursday, uh, so I'm going to see if I can maybe hang out there for some time. Lake Fire Protection District is having a meeting in the afternoon. I always like to keep up on what's going on. I may join our, uh, school board meeting just to also keep up on what's going on since school's opening, and there are some pretty drastic changes happening in Kanakta Unified School District, starting my day off on the 27th at Main Street Bar and Grill at the Judge's Breakfast. Sorry, not Main Street. I don't know why it still says that, over at the Senior Center. Hope Rising Meeting, um, meeting with, um, I'm going to say the name wrong, but Nick Abec. Okay, uh, I may have said it, said it right. Uh, meeting, uh, with her over at, uh, Coffee Shop to discuss, uh, some of our health, uh, metrics, which was a, again, large topic of conversation, uh, in our conference. A... I lost where I was. I will be visiting Reynolds System finally. I, I will make this one happen on Friday, uh, to go see what their, um, industry is doing and what opportunities that brings to our county. Not in my district, been invited multiple times and just interested in learning. Russian River Forum going on at, in the afternoon, and, um, also, uh, meeting for solutions for encampments, um, with, I don't know how many of you have, uh, met Okriti Wong. She is, uh, I believe you've seen her maybe at the Blue Collar, uh, Blue Ribbon Committee, but she's very, uh, passionate... her maybe at the Blue Collar, Blue Ribbon Committee, but she's very passionate and very motivated to help out and find ways to engage with the Board of Supervisors on solutions. And so if you hear from her, please make sure to respond, because she is a pretty amazing human being that happens to have come to our community, and I want to make sure that we find ways to place her in positions that she can engage with change. Then the weekend will be here. I missed unfortunately the concert series that occurred over the past weekend. Hopefully, we'll have a cooler weekend coming up. And then on the thirty-first, I don't have anything right now on Monday other than to prepare for a meeting on Tuesday. We'll say I did have, really appreciated the, yeah, the invitation from Lake County Chamber of Commerce. I got to speak to some of their membership about some of the stuff that the board did. Didn't want to just specifically speak about District Two. I feel like that's can be done by the City of Clear Lake, but really wanted to share what we're doing with economic development, economic mobility, what projects and programs are being discussed and rolled out. We just got our economic development strategic plan kind of discussed or the plan rolled out on the last Tuesday. And so just kind of complemented that conversation with that presentation to them. That kind of rolls out my calendar for now. I'm sure it'll fill up with more.
Tomorrow, I have the last group meeting with the NACO Leadership Program, so meeting with my group for the last week. Thursday, legislative call-in for RCRCE, an update, and then four p.m. is Lake County Recreation, what do they call it? Let me find it. Agency, Lake County Recreation Agency meeting. And then Friday, the last NACO meeting, or Leadership Meeting for the class, and then Clover Creek Hitch Habitat Restoration. See what I can do to make that. It's a Zoom WebEx or WebEx. And then the Russian River Water Forum Discussion will be at one. And then the thirty-first, meeting with CAO Parker, and then my EPA Advisory Committee ad hoc meeting, and then back here on Tuesday, the first.
Do you want to talk about the leadership curriculum for just a minute?
Yeah.
You know, we have an opportunity to send some other staff and maybe just share what you got out of it, or.
It really helps. One of the things that you're looking at, you know, I feel, and this is what I wrote in one of my reflections, is that a lot of it is, a lot of it reaffirms some of the, some of the leadership that I obtained in the military, but at the same time, you have CEOs and Board of Directors, executives that have been doing these things for a lot of years that give more insight as to, you know, as leadership in the military, I had like ten, twelve soldiers. They're talking about corporations. General Powell was obviously, was one of the main focuses on this, and actually, I always loved his videos. It spoke to what I know. Meeting with the folks in the class really gives you an emphasis on what others are dealing with, especially across the nation. But my group, our group, as you know, is all California counties, which deal with similar situations. A lot of them are directors. I think I was the only elected in my group. So there's electeds in different groups throughout the nation, but for whatever reason, I was the only one in this one. So having a chance to create, you know, my own leadership, not just fine tuning it, but also putting together something that I can think of each time, work on something from here forward. You have that skeleton you go back to, whereas before, kind of did, but at the same time, it's on the fly. But with this, it kind of told you like, yeah, you have these qualities, list them out and remember them, so that you basically have like a, like a, what was it, swear in, what is it called?
Your motto?
Yeah, motto. Yeah, your own personal motto from here forward to work on. And so, so yeah, that's, that's.
Was you recommended to us?
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, this will be really short and sweet. Be leaving tomorrow. Drive down to Sacramento. I have my last installment of a new Supervisors Institute put on by CSAC on Thursday and Friday. Do expect to run into some CSAC Finance Corporation people down there, including Mr. Turner from Cannabis Authority. So I may get a question or two where we're at on that. So just a reminder, we have a MOU or something to do on that. And I may just take the opportunity to extend a long weekend out of that. I hear three-day weekends are all the rage now. So with the board's, if the board will indulge me, I think the August first meeting, I'll probably take off for a little personal time. But I'll be, I'll be in county probably Monday afternoon or something like that. But CSAC for the rest of this week, and then I'll probably take a day or two next week. But I should be back in the office August second to start cleaning up some items for the August eighth meeting.
Well, we have a special meeting next week, and we have interviews next week?
Yeah.
So we're going to need you here on August first for those interviews, correct?
It's August third.
Oh, it's, but I thought we were doing part, some of them on the first and some of them on the third. So we've been waiting a long time for everybody to be here. Is there a way that you can postpone your trip so that we can get that worked?
What do you mean, we're doing on the first?
Well, we have.
Public defender.
Public defender interviews that we've been talking about.
I thought we did a special on that.
We're doing, we have a number of applicants that we decided to interview last week, and we are going to interview all of them, and we're going to do some of them on Tuesday and the others at the special meeting. On the third, as discussed in closed session last week.
Let me go work. All right, that's it.
Okay. Last, before we left for Texas, our CAO, CAO Parker and Matthew and I had, and Stephen, had an opportunity to chat with our Governor's Office of External Affairs, go over some of the things that, some of the needs that we have. And we did talk with them about staffing for Cal OES and CDAA, so make sure that once our package has been approved, which it has today, that there is enough staff to do that. That's been a concern of ours is who's going to be handling that program now that there's been retirements. We did also bring up the, the issues with Lake Pillsbury, very, gave them very, a brief overview, and I invited them to reach out to the two of you, and I'm hoping that you can have a meeting to drill down into that further, so the Governor's Office is fully aware of what we've been working on.
Thank you.
And then, I mean, I, I learned so much. It's going to take a week to process everything. We did attend a few workshops and seminars together, but we also did a lot of work separately. A lot of the work that I did was on the Inflation Reduction Act funding and a lot of the programs that are available to us so that we don't miss any steps. And so that had to do with the Department of Energy and housing projects and water with the EPA and EV stations and climate adaptation and recycling even, and resilient communities. We participated in our Rural Caucus, and I did do arts and culture to understand a little bit more about what Supervisor Sabatier has been doing, and I toured a tiny village, which was absolutely incredible, with 3D printed concrete homes.
If you don't mind, since you were in the art thing, did you look up Scott Strickland? His music's pretty amazing.
Oh, right, yeah.
Look it up.
So there's just a lot of things that I'm going to be sitting down with our CAO about, maybe today. There are, what's critical is there are deadlines, and the deadlines are fast approaching. And I will, hoping to bring back, work with Susan and bring back some things to this board so that we don't miss a single beat. It was very clear that all of the departments in our federal government are staffing up so that they can get this money down to the counties. There's a lot of money. It's never been done for. It'll never be done again, and we can't miss any of it. So that's what I'm going to be working on going forward. Tomorrow, I have a gender review in the morning. We're doing our APGB kickoff follow-up meeting, and that, again, is with the grant that we have gotten through Risk Reduction Authority. I have NCO Governing Board meeting, my first one since I've been appointed now. And Thursday, if I can, I'm going to sit in on the Redwood Regional Rise meeting, but I do have a few other things I've got to do. And then we've got our Community Resilience Center Planning Grant meeting, and the Regional Agency JPA, where I will be a person.
I'll be in Zoom, third time in a row, sorry.
It's okay. And our staff will be presenting and also joining me. And there, I'm sorry, Friday morning, Tree Mortality Task Force Benefit Zone Assessment Update. On Saturday, the Buckingham Annual HOA Meeting is happening. I will not be able to attend, so I'm going to be getting updates from our staff to send to the HOA President so that he can share what's been going on, up to date. And then I'll be at the Italian Village for dinner. Hopefully, Ben Rinkleman's coming with me. It sounds like he might, Saturday night. Sunday, I have a memorial service for Bob Norris at Adam Springs. And then Monday, my meeting with CAO Parker and getting caught up on things. So that is it for open session. We do have one more closed session item, which I think we can just handle probably right now if Director Ewing is available. And yeah, I'll read it again. It's eight point two, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight, property APN zero one three zero five six zero four sixteen five four zero, State Highway one seventy-five Cobb, California, negotiating parties, a county negotiator, Lars Ewing, Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, and Robert.
Vardanega.
Vardanega, Vardanega, that's right. Under negotiation price and terms of payment. And so thank you for joining us, and we will now move into closed session.